Welcome to the December 13, 2022, and last council meeting of this year until we recess for the holidays and reconvene in January of 2023. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Asaturian?
Here.
Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Kasakian?
Here. Now, we'll have the flag salute. I see some folks from our fire department in the back. I'd like to ask them to come and lead us in a flag salute here at the podium, please. Those gentlemen in the back in uniform, come on up. Let's have a little bit of change in pace. Come on up, introduce yourself.
They'll rush into a burning building, but getting to the diocese makes them sweat.
All right. Don't all jump at the opportunity at once, but one of you has to come up and introduce yourself and then lead us in the flag salute, so.
I'm Captain Joe Flaheden.
All right, Captain.
Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation, which is delivered by Pastor Shane Kinison.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Let us pray. Almighty God, assembled in this room this night, are all of us who have needs and wants, and many of those needs and wants will be expressed at this desk, and some will remain silent. Remind us, O God, that deeper and more abiding than even our needs and wants that we might verbalize or keep unto ourselves is this greater desire for that which this season entails as we celebrate peace on earth and goodwill toward all people, for we need and want peace. Bring your peace to come upon this earth, in this house, and in this city. Your peace prevailing, your peace sustaining, your peace bonding and bringing all of us together. Grant us your peace, O God, and remind these our leaders whom we have elected, appointed, or employed that true and lasting peace is to always be characterized in truthfulness, integrity, honesty, transparency, and accountability. And lasting peace is always to be exhibited as we put out our hand toward one another. And so this is our prayer this night for these who lead us, for those who direct us, and for the community that makes Glendale our home. And we pray in your name, who you are always, the King of peace and goodness. Amen.
Thank you. Reverend Dr. Kinison is Senior Pastor of First Baptist Church of Glendale. Thank you for leading us in prayer and invocation, and thank you, Captain, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk Kabajin, may we have your report?
Yes. The agenda for the December 13, 2022, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, December 8, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right. Thank you. And what is next on the agenda?
Next are consent items, including minutes.
Are we gonna, and we don't need to do agenda preview because we are dark until City Manager Galanion. Why don't we tell folks when we'll be coming back into these chambers?
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, City Council. We are dark for the next three Tuesdays. The first time that we'll be back in front of council, we'll have a public meeting. It'll be on January 10 of 2023.
All right, so that doesn't mean folks won't be working. People will still be here at City Hall. Council members will be out and about at events. We just will not be having any businesses, items coming before this full body, and we'll see you, as was mentioned, on January 10, 2023, God willing. Next item is, yes?
Oh, we're doing the consent. I wanted to pull an item from consent.
Which item would you like to pull?
4C.
Okay, so I have one card for 4B, and we have one item for 4C. Who would like to move the balance of the consent calendar?
Second.
All right, may we have roll call, please?
Council members Asaturian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes, and I have a card submitted from the public for 4B. Can we have 4B read into the record?
Yes. 4B, Public Works Regarding Plans and Specific... ...Specification for the Brand Park Motorway Improvements Project. Resolution adopting the plans and specifications for the Brand Park Motorway Improvements Project. Specification number 3940, Plan Number 1-3111, and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Thank you. Stephen Meek, you have three minutes.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I just had a little comment about the improvement. I don't disagree with it whatsoever. I think we should continue, but I wanted to bring forth that the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association has talked to numerous city council people and staff regarding the streets in the Adams Hill area, and I would like the city council and staff to more consider improving those streets that are full of cracks and dips and et cetera, et cetera. I've sent lists to people. We've talked. We've brought city council people out. I just want you to start thinking about moving things towards South Glendale and Adams Hill. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. If there's no other questions or if none of my colleagues need further explanation on this, can we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Brotman and seconded by Councilmember Divine. May we have roll call, please, on 4B.
Council members Asaturian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Please read 4C into the record now.
4C, Libraries, Arts, and Culture. Regarding library, arts, and culture, regarding acceptance of grant funds for Glendale Central Library Critical Maintenance Sustainability and Youth Spaces renovation. One, motion accepting $5,670,328 in building forward grant funds from the California State Library to support the Glendale Central Library Critical Maintenance Sustainability and Youth Spaces renovation project, and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all agreements, amendments, certifications, and documents necessary to accept and implement the funding. Two, resolution of appropriation.
All right. Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I wanted to pull this, well, for two reasons. One, I thought it would be useful for the public to hear about this large sum of money, not to have it buried in a consent item, but 5.6 million, and then I think there's another 6 million coming from help from the state legislature, from Assemblymember Friedman. But the other thing was, I was, I wanted to follow up on a conversation I had with Nicole, I forget your last name.
Baccini.
Baccini, about the solar on the roof, and the two questions I had were, one, are we maximizing the space available on the roof, even if it exceeds maybe what the requirements of the library itself are? Are we maximizing that real estate? And then can we consider putting in storage, energy storage system, because the library is kind of one of those spaces that I think is a critical facility, and in the event that we have summertime outages, it's a place where people are kind of logically going to go for refuge. So it would be nice if that were set up as one of our kind of resilience centers. So maybe you could just comment a little bit on that. Thank you.
So should I just address questions or go through the report briefly?
Go ahead and respond to the questions.
Respond to questions. Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. So to address your questions, the, my understanding from GWP is that the array that we're putting on the roof of the Central Library will maximize the space that we have there. It is a pretty large array that we're putting up there. I checked in with Public Works, and my understanding from them is that due to the size of the building, a battery would not be sufficient to run the systems, but we do have an emergency generator in the library so that it can be run in emergency situations, but I hear what you're...
Yeah, yeah. I don't want, emergency generators is probably, what fuel is running that emergency generator?
I'm not totally sure.
But it's a fossil fuel. So no, we don't want, we don't want the emergency generator to be what keeps the lights on there. We want battery storage, and I don't see why the space, there's plenty of space. So I would think...
And I think that's a question we can take back to Public Works. It's not my area of expertise.
Yeah, yeah. So I would like to get support from my colleagues, let that be taken into consideration, because we do have a lot of money, and we're doing a lot of great stuff at the library. It's all really exciting. I want to make sure that we're taking this opportunity to do the right thing as far as clean energy goes in that site.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor, we'll look into that request when we're preparing the plans to go out to bid.
Okay, thanks. Then I'll move the item then, with that understanding.
A second.
Okay. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Council members Asaturian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. All right, next item.
Next are city council and staff comments.
Okay. Who among my colleagues wants to go first?
I will. I simply want, I'll make this short, sweet. I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays. Please be kind to each other. Make that your gift to your friends, family, and even strangers. Thank you, and Happy New Year, too.
All right.
I'll just underline that. Happy holidays to everybody, and I hope everybody stays safe over the break.
Okay. Councilmember Asaturian, then Councilmember Najarian?
One issue I actually wanted to bring up, as many of you may have heard, the Republic of Artsakh has been landlocked in the last couple of days. They're calling it a humanitarian crisis because the people of Artsakh are basically landlocked, and there's no way for them to get medical, food, or gas, or utilities at this point. I'd like to ask my council, given that we already have a resolution that was passed in December of 2020 on the subject matter, if we can put out a statement joining in solidarity with the people of Artsakh and condemning Azerbaijan's actions in keeping the people of Artsakh in landlocked at this point.
So the request is for a...
I'd like for the city to put out a statement that's off of, I think, I believe we have a language in the resolution that was passed in December 2020 that can be used for this, but...
Is there a second for your request?
Yeah, I'll second. I think we all got, I think we all got correspondents asking for us to consider, you know, despite all the things we've said so far, which, and we've taken a very strong position, just one more time to make our voices heard. So yes, I support that.
So there has been a second for that request, and there'll be a written statement reaffirming the city's stated position of solidarity and support for the people of Artsakh in the face of this humanitarian crisis. Is that all?
And Happy Holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Something really heavy and then something really light.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yeah, I'd like to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. I also received an internal memo today about traffic calming measures that were placed in Adams Hill, and then, and then perhaps being considered to be removed. So I think that's a, I think that's something that should come to council, and we should understand how those measures were installed, why they're being asked to be removed. The memo indicated discussion from the community with other council members. I haven't heard anything, so I'd like to see what went wrong, if something went wrong, and if we can learn from that in our future implementation of traffic calming devices.
Or can I?
Sure. Let me just, okay, go ahead.
So I've actually met with one of the residents who was, who came to me on behalf of several residents who have language barriers, where this is installed right in front of their home. One of the requests was, and then I got a couple of emails from other residents that weren't part of that group, stating that they're not able to sleep at night, and it's really loud and so forth. I believe because we're coming back in January, and for this to agendize, I don't know how this impacts the residents where this home, their home is like right where these bumps are. I'm asking maybe if we can have staff remedy some of it. That's going to be a long while until we meet. I don't know how this...
Yeah, I mean, my point is, I didn't know anything about it, and it's a rather different type of process where it's been installed, and now it's being removed. I think we have a lot to learn from that, whether it is outreach, whether it is the number of signatures required, whether it's placement. That's something that we should be updated on, and if there's policy to be made, that we should be making that policy rather than, you know, a neighbor complaining for whatever reason that they want it removed and that happening.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Galanion.
Mayor Kasakian, City Council. So this, these traffic calming measures were a pilot program, were not intended to be placed or installed on a permanent basis. So the intention was to try it out and see what the impact would be on calming traffic and/or the noise impact because of these rumble strips that they generate when vehicles drive over them, as you can imagine. So Public Works has installed these, again, as a pilot program, pending feedback and input from the community, the neighborhood, as to the future of moving forward, whether the plan is going to be to make them permanent or remove them completely. But if you'd like, we can definitely, next year, obviously, bring an item back for your consideration if, and I agree with Councilmember Najarian, if there are lessons to be learned. It wasn't necessarily any missteps in the process of traffic calming guidelines, but again, it was a pilot program intended to solicit feedback from the neighborhood.
Okay.
If I may, I was also contacted by, actually, Stephen Meek, who is here tonight, and he was telling me that he'd been talking to the neighbors, and some of them do live right on, right on these spots, and that they are, it's very noisy.
Okay.
We have a consensus, I think, on that.
Sure, I think that we've heard from enough folks, and before the city attorney feels that we're speaking about an item that hasn't been agendized, we'll revisit this. Thank you all for bringing it to our attention. Some of those folks came to my coffee hours this morning and also raised this issue. And I will just say as a cautionary note to both our police, to people in that neighborhood, to everyone, one of the issues seems to be that folks are circumventing the rumble strips, their official term being the rumble strips, and are going into opposing traffic to not make, to not go over those bumps. So just be careful out there, whatever neighborhood you live in. People are driving pretty unsafely around the holidays. So that brings me to my comments, which is, it's the holiday season. It's very crowded. It's very tough to get around town. People are distracted. I know I certainly have many things on my mind besides just the responsibilities before us as council. Getting from one place to another, making sure that, you know, you do your shopping for loved ones, whatever the case may be, just I want to urge all of my fellow neighbors and Glendaleans, be careful, be kind to each other, to everyone else. And most importantly, knowing that it's the holiday season, take precautions to keep yourself safe. There's a lot of packages being delivered to a lot of homes. People love having those packages delivered because it's a lot easier than perhaps going to the store, and we know that that can cause an uptick in people stealing packages, and be careful, is what I'll say. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to start off by thanking my colleagues last week, as well as Mayor Pro Tem, Dan Brotman, who pinch-hit for me in the role of chairing these meetings. I had, speaking of being careful and taking every precaution on a rainy Sunday in a rush to get somewhere and not paying attention, I decided to pick a fight with the sidewalk, and the sidewalk won. I tripped and fell, hurt myself, but I'm okay. I'm here now. It was a lot, it looked a lot worse at the time than it actually was, but thank you to, thank you to the individuals who actually stopped to make sure I was okay. You know, there was, there's a lot of kind people that live in our city, and I got a chance to meet some of them that evening when I took a spill. But now we're back. I want to ask staff about the status of Rock Haven. We've had some inclement weather, and I've had an email about what's happening with those structures. Is there someone from staff that can perhaps give us an update as to what we're doing to make sure that the condition of those buildings doesn't further deteriorate?
If Mr. Imrani, Director of Public Works, should be able to give you an update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. In terms of the Rock Haven project, we have, we were advertising for bids for replacing the roofs and putting tarps, and also for remedying some of the hazardous material that we have for those buildings. The bids that we received essentially for the remediation of the hazardous material were reasonable. However, the bids that we received for the other two items, the roofing and the tarping, we felt it's excessive. And they, we followed up after the fact with the contractors to see why we're receiving such high bids, and we were told a variety of different reasons. They weren't, some of them were worried about the historic nature of the buildings. Some of them had lots of work already, so they, you know, inflated the price. So what we have requested in light of all this is to be able to go out there and rebid the project again as two separate entities instead of one package for the roofing and, you know, the, replacing the tiles and the tarp, is to separate the bids into two separate packages. We're working with our purchasing division right now, as we speak, to make that happen, and we were hoping to bring back or receive updated bids once we separate them so we can get a better price. So that's where we are.
Thank you. I think that all of us up here will agree that the sooner we can do that, the better. Obviously, this is going to cause an unfortunate delay, and, you know, we're already into the wet season. So whatever we can do to make sure that happens as soon as possible would be really appreciated.
Absolutely.
Also, thank you, Mr. Meek, for bringing up the issue regarding paving of certain streets. Very often I'm approached and said something along the lines of, you know, my street is never, hasn't been redone since I moved to Glendale or for as long as I've lived here, and whether it's in Adams Hill or another part of the city. I'd like to ask staff to perhaps point or have someplace, I know that we have a report of when our streets were redone and which streets were last paved. If we can somehow make that on an outwardly public-facing portal on our website, I think that would be of interest to some folks, and then we can, I know we will probably be hearing about street repaving on a regular basis when Mr. Imrani updates us on the conditions of our streets. But I think that sometimes folks will feel that they are being neglected. It would be probably good for folks to also be able to access and see when things were paved. Last but not least, I had the opportunity to, there have been a number of holiday events from the Glendale Arts Open House and Holiday Event yesterday to the Salvation Army's Kettle Kickoffs. Yet, this weekend was Rotary Noon Club's 100th anniversary, and they had a 20s theme, a 1920s theme, celebrating 100 years of civic involvement and charitable work in our city. So congratulations to them on an excellent celebration and excellent work that they do. So with that, what is, does staff have any comments? All right, what is the next item on the agenda?
Next is community event announcements. We have five speaker cards.
All right, the first speaker is Tamara Movsesian. Ms. Movsesian, three minutes. Ms. Movsesian, three minutes.
Yes, through this house, I hear the, hear the, hear the, what are you, what's your key basis? The card that he was, is true, it's good, that, art, that's, has, I, the, the, who, the, period, it did, get a, go, or, you're, like, she, come, you've had, the, been, I, but, I, get, she, did, he, had, he's, they, so, now, what, now, what, I, what, see, go, look, I, brought, they, they, I, keep, by, but, they, they,
Allocate year in and year out, eighty million. This year, I believe, the budget went up to about four or five million. No, I'm sorry, three million, three to four million. It's still insufficient because none of the streets are reconstructed. Next slide, please. And this is the record of road reconstruction for the past ten years. Zero for last year, zero for twenty twenty-one, and zero all the way along for the last ten years. So where are the city's priorities? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. You know, I write this community newsletter. It goes out to thousands of people every week. Today, I got an interesting letter from a woman, and she said this to me. Hi, Mike. Back in August, Ellen Asatran, councilwoman, reached out to Senator Portotino about the need for a large regional park in South Glendale. She then talked to Mr. Onick, our Parks and Recreation Director. He gave a quota of twenty-two million dollars for such a project. So Ellen asked for a set aside, the necessary fund for a regional park. Mr. Onick told her they could get matching funds from L.A. County. I don't think the rest of the staff has pushed forward for her request of a regional park. I'm letting you know because I know you're very interested in this subject and might want to do a public information request for further details. I don't live in South Glendale, and neither does our council members. Who represents South Glendale on our city council? As far as I see, nobody. Why are we going forward and putting up housing in South Glendale? Six hundred eighty-two units. We don't need that. We didn't need more traffic and congestion and potholes to go along with it. South Glendale deserves a regional park. This council and previous council has already destroyed Central Park with buildings and buildings and buildings, which should never have been that way because the founding fathers said, "We're going to make this a regional park." And not for a library, or not for a museum, or a adult recreational center. It was supposed to be green with trees. Number two on my item is in today's newsletter I sent out. It said, "Watch your wallet. I'm watching eighty-two percent solid waste rate increase." And in there, I have a form that has the people to fill out this form and say, "Please send it to the city council people that you don't want a rate increase on your solid waste." Ladies and gentlemen, if you're willing, please fill this form out when you receive it. Please. And lastly, the Americana at Brand. It's a subject with me, but I think Glendale voters need to know what's going on there. We've been promised every year, every council, every council member has said, "We're going to look into it, Mr. Mohill." And here we are at the end of twenty twenty-two, and no one has said, "We're going to agendize this." Mayor Kasakian, you said you would discuss this after the November election. I hope you would bring this up tonight and has one of your council colleagues second the motion so we can finally discuss this in twenty twenty-three. I believe Glendale voters and the taxpayers need to know how much money we're making from the Glendale, from the Americana at Brand. My calculation is we're making zero dollars, but Mr. Caruso is making millions. Thank you.
Well, okay. Thank you very much. Ramella Aragi, three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Ramel.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening. For this chamber and a lot of people here that they don't know what I'm doing here. They're wondering, "Okay, what was this woman is doing here?" Which is lousy English. Well, I'm affordable housing activist. And the reason I became an activist, that you refused that three hundred dollar subsidies to my husband and I. And so, as a matter of fact, that is more rewarding. Being an activist is more rewarding than those three hundred dollars breadcrumbs that you threw in front of the senior citizens. And, well, myself, as an architect, affordable housing is dear to my heart. And here, yeah, here is a free podium. So I wanted to take advantage of this free podium and talk to the people who really need affordable housing, especially senior citizens that there really, it's a challenge for them to pay a rent. And here, I want to reach out to those people, people, especially seniors, that the rents are going up and landlords are going to crash you down. So I want to reach out to them and ask them to join us for this fight. And at last, in this holiday season, I wish for people who don't have to have a roof over their heads. And happy holidays.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are all the public comment cards that we have. The only thing I'll say, Mr. Mohill is correct that in terms of addressing any questions that he may have or he feels community members may have about the Americana, I did not feel that it was appropriate to necessarily bring those issues up. First of all, I don't want the impression to be the way Mr. Mohill presents it is as though something illegal transpired over the transactions of Americana. All of that was done not only openly in public sessions of previous city councils, but also it went to a vote of the public in terms of the completion of that project and what has come about since. Nothing happens. In fact, you'll hear about it later on this evening. There's an item, I think, before us that where we'll be addressing issues related to the Americana at Brand development and center. So I don't want it to, you know, this misrepresentation as though there's something nefarious going on. However, I think that as we have a report back regarding sales taxes and when we periodically look at the financial health of the city, perhaps with one of those, we can have also a report as to, a summary as to the Americana at Brands' structure. I know that some folks, I get often asked, you know, whether the parkland belongs to the city, whether it doesn't. Maybe a timeline of how things have evolved at the Americana at Brand, I think, would be helpful for people to understand as well as the benefit to the city. I know that the city has a page where they have some information posted about it, but perhaps updating it and providing more information publicly once would help, which would also give folks an opportunity to ask their questions. So with that, let us move on to the next item.
Next are action items. Action item A, Community Development Regarding Authorization to Request an Appropriation of Three Hundred Thousand Dollars in Transportation Development Act (TDA) Funds. One, Motion Authorizing Staff to Request Three Hundred Thousand Dollars of Transportation Development Act (TDA) Funds from Los Angeles Metro for Pedestrian Safety Improvement on Brand Boulevard's Citywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Counts and the Purchase of Necessary Equipment for Planning and Design of Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities. Two, Resolution of Appropriation of Three Hundred Thousand Dollars of Transportation Development Act (TDA) Grant Funds.
Okay, Mr. Galanian and Mr. Calvert.
If Mr. Calvert, our Community Director, is ready to make this presentation.
It'll be a very brief presentation, just one slide. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We are here to ask for an authorization, actually, to request and appropriate three hundred thousand dollars in Transportation Development Act funds. We're going to use this money for three different items. The first would be to purchase equipment that is necessary for us to be able to do our evaluation, our analysis, to be able to depict that analysis as well. The second is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for us to be able to update our pedestrian and cyclist counts. These are very important whenever we're determining where we locate pedestrian and cyclist improvements, as well as when we're amending or updating plans. And as you know, we are updating our bicycle transportation plan right now. The third is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go out to bed and purchase planters for the, for Brand over 134. What we've heard from the stakeholder community and business community is that walk from the north side of the 134 into the heart of our downtown is not a very attractive walk, doesn't feel very comfortable, very safe. So the idea here is to purchase these, locate them along the edge of the curb or along the edge of the sidewalk. They would be crash rated. The Greater Downtown Glendale Association would take care of the plantings and the maintenance. So those are the three items that we would be using this funding for, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for a very brief and succinct presentation. Any questions or comments?
I haven't.
Go ahead, Mr. Brotman.
Question slash comment. Mr. Calvert, we talked about the possibility of applying that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of to these planters to other safety improvements like high-visibility crosswalks. You said you would look into that?
Yes, that is possible. We can use it towards that. What I would also say is that we don't have to choose between one or the other. If we get direction from council to go and acquire more of this funding, we can then put that towards high-visibility crosswalks. So we can have both projects essentially. This is not a one-time ask. We can come back to council later on and do another appropriation.
Okay, because I'm just not, you know, I've gone and looked at this area here, and it just, I don't know, it seems to me that there's not a lot of room. And a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for planters, I think it's really more an aesthetic thing than a safety measure. I would like us to, I mean, there are two things. One, I would like us, I agree that this crossing is really unpleasant. But I'd like us to take a more comprehensive, maybe more ambitious approach to how we redesign this crossing. And we've talked, we've talked about some ideas around that. This seems to me just, you know, just plugging a hole in the dike, really, and it's not, it's not really a great solution. And I also, you know, always hear, "We don't have the money for these high-visibility crosswalks." And to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this, I think we'd get more bang for our buck as far as safety goes to put in some of these better crosswalks. So that's what my position would be. Everything else is fine, but this hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm just not real excited about this, and I think there are better ways to spend that money. And if we can get more money later for this, fine. But this, to me, seems like more of an aesthetic feature than a pedestrian safety feature.
Councilmember Devine.
I come off the freeway at this intersection, and cars take that turn very fast sometimes. So I see this as a safety preventative measure for those that are walking along that sidewalk. And I really don't see anything wrong with having a little bit of green on our, you know, this concrete tunnel that we have. So I'm willing to approve this.
Okay. Councilmember Asatrian.
I actually take this route every time I walk from North Glendale to South. I think the current walk is extremely unpleasant, and I do think that this will allow for additional safety measures. I'm in full support of this. If you're able to, I know that that crosswalk is a huge issue for accidents, and so I don't know what we're planning to do to help mitigate that. But I think that that's a different conversation than this one today.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Najarian?
I think it helps the connectivity between North Brand and Mid Brand. There's a lot, I see a lot of people who appear to be hotel guests from the Hilton and the Glenmark who want to get downtown to the restaurants or to the Americana, taking that walk there. And I walk it myself as well, so I think it's, I mean, we could always divert the pedestrian count money to the crosswalks.
No, I mean, to me, it's better to have it than not to have it. I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying what can we do for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Why don't you make another request to Metro, and I'm sure that we can find a way to have that.
Yeah, you're on record there. Okay.
I mean, for crosswalks, you're talking about crosswalks.
High visibility. Because we put in these crosswalks, but we don't put in all the striking.
Go ahead, go for it.
Okay. All right, I think we have some consensus.
Dream big.
Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded and moved by Councilmember Devine, seconded by Councilmember Asatrian. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Based on what Mr. Najarian just said, yes.
Devine.
Do it fast.
Yes. Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes. Thank you. All right, next item.
Next item is Action Item B, Finance Regarding Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two Annual Financial Report, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Two, Twenty Twenty-Three First Quarter Financial Status Report, Employee Medical Stipend, Inflation Relief and Retention Pay, and Class and Compensation Adjustments. One, Motion to Accept City of Glendale's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Communication with Those Charged with Governance for the Fiscal Year Ending June Thirty, Twenty Twenty-Two. Two, Motion to Notam File the Financial Status Report for the Year Ended June Thirty, Twenty Twenty-Two. Three, Motion to Notam File the Financial Status Report for the Period Ending September Thirty, Twenty Twenty-Two. Four, Motion to Increase the Citywide Authorized Salary Position Count. Five, Motion to Approve a One-Time Medical Stipend, Inflation Relief and Retention Pay for City of Glendale Employees. Six, Resolution Providing for the Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for Employees of the City of Glendale Covered by the Glendale Management Association Memorandum of Understanding, Including Employee Relations Exempt Classifications. Seven, Resolution Providing for the Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for Employees of the City of Glendale Covered by the Glendale City Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding, Including Confidential and Hourly Classifications. Eight, Resolution Providing for the Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for Appointed Executive Level Employees of the City of Glendale. Nine, Resolution Providing for Supplementary Benefits and Compensation of Certain Officers and Executive Employees of the City of Glendale to Supplement the Classification and Compensation Resolution of Said City. Ten, Resolution of Appropriation.
All right, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council. As you noticed by Madam Clerk's catching her breath after this very lengthy recording of the item. As such, we are going to do a tag-team presentation, starting with Jason Bradford, our Director of Finance and Information Technology. And we also have our auditors, external auditors, that will make their comments. And then I will take on a couple of slides and pass it on to Paula Adams, our Chief Human Resources Officer, to conclude the presentation, and then I will open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of the council. It's my pleasure to present our financial update this evening. Before I start, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the accounting staff who put in some long hours over the past six months to prepare our financial statements led by Su Jin Lee, our Deputy Director of Finance, who's in the chamber tonight, also Teresa Clark, our Accounting Manager, and Alan De Leon, Accounting Manager. I thank them and the entire finance, accounting team for all their efforts to put this document together. With that, tonight, I will be presenting our financial statements for twenty-one, twenty-two. And as Mr. Galanian indicated, we have Ms. Daphne Munoz, who is the engagement partner from our external independent CPA firm, who will address the council. After which, I will cover the general fund results for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And then Mr. Galanian will cover the employee medical stipend, inflation relief, and retention pay program. After that, I will give the council an update on our general fund first quarter, twenty-two, twenty-three. And the presentation will conclude with Paula Adams, our Chief Human Resource Officer, to cover compensation alignment. So per our charter, we are required to go through a fairly rigorous external audit performed by an independent CPA firm. I'm pleased to report the city once again received an unmodified opinion. This is the highest rating we can receive from our external auditors, and it means that our financial statements fairly present the City of Glendale's financial condition and results of its operations as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And we comply with all generally accepted accounting principles and all government accounting standards. The other important note is that we had no material weaknesses noted in our system of internal controls, which essentially means that our systems of checks and balances are sufficient. We would prevent and/or detect a material misstatement should it occur. And lastly, we had no disagreements with our auditors, meaning we concurred with their findings and their applications of the applicable accounting standards. This is the city's consolidated financial picture, our statement of activities, otherwise known as our income statement. It is divided into our government activities and business activities. Government activities represent functions that are principally supported by taxes and grants. So this includes our general fund, our special revenue grant funds, capital improvement funds, and our debt service fund. For our government activities, revenues totaled four hundred and thirteen million, offset with expenditures of three hundred and forty-six million, with a net position increased by sixty-seven million. On the business activity side, that's exactly what it sounds like. These are our enterprise funds, and these funds recover their costs via user fees and charges, and therefore are accounted for like a business. So this would include our electric and water funds, sewer fund, and refuse fund. There is a total of no change to the net position for these consolidated funds, and the city's total net position at the end of the year is one point seven billion dollars. At this time, I'd like to invite Daphne Munoz, our engagement partner from Clifton Larson Allen, who will address the council with the results of the audit.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'm Daphne Munoz, Principal at Clifton Larson Allen, and I'm here tonight to present to you the results of our audit for the year ended June thirty, twenty-twenty-two. I will be talking about our scope of our services, our auditor's opinion, our report on the internal control over financial reporting, and lastly, our communications with those charged with governance. So for our scope of our services, we perform an audit of the financial statements, which includes the electric utility and water utility financial statements. We were also going to do a compliance audit of the federal expenditures under uniform guidance. The city spent more than seven hundred fifty thousand in federal expenditures. Therefore, the city is required to have a compliance audit under the uniform guidance. And we have also performed and agreed upon procedures on the city's calculation of the appropriation limit. So the very first page in the annual, comprehensive annual financial report after the introductory section is our auditor's opinion. The first paragraph of our opinion talks about the, actually, talks about our opinion and also the period that is covered by our audit. So we perform an audit of the financial statements for the year ended June thirty, twenty-twenty-two. That covers the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirty, twenty-twenty-two. As Jason mentioned, we have issued an unmodified opinion for the year ended twenty-twenty-two. And an unmodified opinion means that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with U.S. GAAP. In layman's term, it is a clean opinion, and again, it is the highest opinion that any audit can get. The financial statements are the responsibility of the management as well as adopting internal controls over financial reporting. Our responsibility as auditors is to provide an opinion on the financial statements. We conducted our audit in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. And those standards require us that we plan and perform to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatements. So as part of our audit, we consider the city's internal control over financial reporting for the purpose of, to determine whether our audit procedures are appropriate for the purpose of expressing our opinions on those financial statements. However, we do not issue an opinion on those internal controls. As mentioned before, we did not identify any material weakness or significant deficiencies over internal control over financial reporting. Our standards require us to communicate certain information to those charged with governance. First is the plant's scope. The timing of our audit was communicated during a planning meeting. Management is responsible for selection and use of appropriate accounting policies, and those policies are disclosed in Note One to the financial statements. During the year, the city is required to implement Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Eighty-Seven, which changed the way the city reports releases in the financial statements. And that statement was implemented effective July first, twenty twenty-one. So the financial statements include significant estimates, which actual results could vary from those estimates. And just to highlight, some of the significant estimates included in the financial statements are the required contributions, the pension expense, net pension liability and related deferred inflows and outflows for the city's defined benefit pension plan under Calpers and the Par's supplementary retirement plan, as well as the OPAP expense, net OPAP liability and deferred inflows and outflows for the city's other post-employment benefit plan, sick leave conversion expense related and liability related to the city's retiree health savings plan, and the claims liability for workers' compensation and general liabilities, which are based on certain actuarial assumptions and methods prepared by outside accountants. And lastly, the liability for the landfill post-closure care costs are based on estimates by the L.A. County Sanitation District. We did not encounter any difficulties during our audit. We did not have any disagreements that arose during our audit. We have, management have provided us representations that they have provided us all pertinent information to our audit, and that letter was provided to us and dated November eighteen, twenty-twenty-two. And lastly, to our knowledge, the city did not consult with other accountants regarding any auditing or accounting matters. With that, I turn it back to Jason.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. With that, I will jump into the general fund closeout for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. In regards to the general fund, it finished better than we thought we would. We did balance our general fund with about five point one million dollars in ARPA funding. On top of that, as you recall during the last budget study sessions, I indicated sales tax looked good, and that has continued through the summer months. Sales tax actually came in about four point five million dollars higher than we thought, paced by new auto sales, casual dining, service stations, electronics appliance stores, and general consumer goods. Other revenues came in higher as well, such as our occupancy tax, building permits, and our paramedic fees. On the expenditure side, we came in under budget. We had about two point seven million in savings in our salary and benefits. And on the M and O side, we came in under budget about three point seven million dollars, which gives us a total expenditure in the general fund of two hundred forty-three point five million, or ninety-seven point four percent expended. So based on revenues, actual revenues received of about two hundred forty-seven million and expenditures of two hundred forty-three point five million gives us a surplus of three point five million. Combined with our successor agency loan repayment of one point three million increases our unassigned and charter reserve of four point nine million. Gives us a reserve of ninety point eight million, or thirty-six point three percent. If we take into the account the medical stipend payment and inflation relief, which Mr. Galanian will address on the next slide, our reserve percentage would decrease to thirty-four point four percent of our final budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Galanian, who will address the inflation relief, medical stipend, and retention pay.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council. Anthem is one of the medical insurance provider for the city, as you know. And their rates have increased anywhere from seventeen percent to sixty-seven percent, which means premiums have gone up from ninety dollars a month to three hundred and thirty dollars a month, depending on the number of participants in the plan, which means a total of one point seven million dollar cost, out-of-pocket cost to our employees. Also, it's been all over the news, and you know that the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, has averaged over eight percent a month with a peak of nine point one percent that happened in June of twenty twenty-two. Mr. Mayor, you and other council members are cognizant, have been cognizant of these cost impacts and financial burdens on our employees, and you have shared your concerns with me. Thus, in order to mitigate the impact of these financial burdens on our employees, we recommend your approval of one-time payments for inflation relief. recommend your approval of one-time payments for inflation relief. We have coined an inflation relief, as well as a medical premium stipend, and there's a third item here, retention pay. And essentially, this is for our GWP, electric line mechanics that provide critical service to maintain our electric grid, and we have experienced, we have been experiencing major challenges in attraction and retention of personnel in that division. Currently, we have 1,603 full-time authorized positions. However, only 1,370 of these positions are filled. In the general fund, the savings from salaries and benefits is approximately $7.8 million, and this includes chiefly savings from 233 vacant positions that we've had on the books. I'm proud, I'm very proud of our staff, dedicated staff across all the departments who have been working hard to maintain our existing service levels without impact to the quality and the level of service they provide, and they've taken on additional programs and services as necessary, and this has only been possible by folks in these filled positions carrying the load of the vacancies, thus greatly contributing to the budget savings. As for inflation relief, our recommendation is a one-time payment of 3,500 per employee. Estimated number of full-time employees that will, if approved, will receive this one-time payment is 1,370, and another 115 full-time equivalent of hourly employees. The total cost is estimated at $3.5 million that will come out of general fund, and another 1.6 million in all other funds. For the medical premium stipend, this would be another one-time lump sum payment for only those employees affected by the rate increase who are, who are using Anthem's insurance. This would be an estimated 730 employees, and we keep saying estimated, but because it goes up and down, we don't know how many people will be employed in those positions by the time this takes effect. And that cost is estimated at $1.2 million to come out of general fund, and another 500,000 in all other funds. I'd like to, it's important to note that both of these payments are not subject to PERS, and these would be paid, again, with fiscal year 2122 surplus funds. Retention pay, I previously mentioned, we have experienced unprecedented issues with retention attraction with electric line mechanic group, who have moved to other public utilities, including LADWP, that recently approved a very generous COLA and pay increase package that is going to be very attractive to other public utility employees. There are also private contractors out there that are offering significant signing bonuses and obviously higher compensation to lure our experienced line mechanics away from the city. As such, I'm recommending a one-time lump sum payment of 7,500 per employee payable in December. The total cost of this payment would be 97,500, and that would apply to 13 employees in that group. Again, this is not subject to PERS, and the cost will be absorbed in GWP existing electric budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
All right. Mr. Bradford?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. I will go ahead and cover our first quarter update for the general fund for fiscal year 2223. This is a few charts of our major revenue sources in the general fund, and we have some first quarter comparison data back to fiscal year 1819. The red bar in the graph signify kind of our pandemic year, COVID year, and you can see in these revenue categories, we are trending in the, in the right direction. I just make a couple comments. Our property tax is obviously pretty low at this time, and the simple reason is most people don't pay their property tax until November or December, and sales tax continues to hold strong, and it continues to pleasantly surprise us as we continue to outpace the state, and as you can see, our occupancy tax has rebounded as well. This is a very quick snapshot of all of our major revenue categories at September 30. They're more or less tracking is what we would expect. I should note, revenues really don't track uniformly, so it's not unusual to be at 10% received as of September 30. Couple changes to our revenue estimates for this year. Based on our strong sales tax to date, and what our consultants tell us, we are proposing an increase to our revenue estimate in our sales tax of 1.6 million in the general fund tax, and another 1.8 million for Measure S. I should note, this is extremely very conservative and is still lower than what our consultants have forecasted, but based on what we know, we feel it's an appropriate adjustment. Our revenues look good, and I would not anticipate lowering any of these for 2223. And of course, when I come back to the council with the mid-year update and budget study sessions, we'll have an idea of what the holiday season looked like for sales tax. On the expenditure side, we are slightly below 25% at this time through the quarter. These do track a little more uniformly, particularly our salary and benefits. Couple of revisions to our budget. Our budget has increased by $5.6 million in its two pieces. First piece was the council-approved budget adjustments of 1.6 million, which was for the GMA Police Managers MOU, and the council did approve some Measure S programs of a little over 4.2 million that is carried over into this fiscal year. By way of reminder, some of those programs include the Low Income Student Rental Assistance Program, Citywide Traffic Study, our Pilot Street Art Program, Climate Action Plan, et cetera, et cetera. So now I will provide a very brief summary of the proposed budget adjustments of totally in $1.1 million. $44,000 is in the general fund, offset by $10,000 in donation revenue, and about $1 million is in the non-general fund, offset by $600,000, approximately $600,000 in grant revenue. For community service in parks, they've received a one-time donation of $10,000 from the Glendale Rotary Club for youth and family services and open space programs. They did receive additional grant funding for nutritional meals, which requires a local match, $35,000. Another grant from the state of California, $178,000, with another $200,000 from development impact fees as our local match contribution. For Library Arts and Culture Department, they got a grant from the California State Library for 2023 Earth Day Fair programming, and then they did receive a grant in the amount of $272,000 from the state library for the maintenance and remodel of Grandview Library with a request for local match, and the same amount of $272,000 from the Measure S CIP Fund. And the police department received $91,000 in grants for the National Opioid Settlement to be used for high-impact ABAM activities. And lastly, community development is requesting two new positions, an inspector two and building code specialist three, which would increase our authorized count to 11605 and 920 in the general fund respectively. So this is what our general fund forecast for '22 looks like at this point. Budget adoption, we're using, indicated we use 17.9 million ARPA money. That along with Measure S fund balance and Economic Development Fund balance leaves us with, and taking into account the recommended budget adjustments, leaves us with a surplus of about $137,000 for '2223, and we will, leaves us a ending reserve of 86.2 million, or about 29.6% of our final '2223 revised budget of $290.9 million. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Paula Adams to cover the class and comp resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Regarding the class and comp resolution pursuant to their MOU, the Glendale City Employees Association and the Glendale Management Association brought forth classifications for a salary survey. Of those surveyed, six stood out as being a higher percentage behind the average when compared to other agencies surveyed. And what's before you are recommended for a salary adjustment between 11% and 16.5% and applied using the step advancement process already codified in the MOU. Each salary step is separated by 5.5%, and the fiscal impact is layered over three years. Due to the fact that the city has also embarked on a larger salary study and is presently reviewing 144 job classifications, this approach is recommended as the best at this time, and no appropriation is necessary. As relates to the vacant police chief position, we are recommending a 2% salary adjustment to prevent compaction with subordinate police supervisors represented by the GMA Police Sworn Managers Unit, who recently negotiated various adjustments to compensation and benefits. Additionally, in the executive level resolution, there are recommended changes to certain benefits that only impact the one vacant police chief position. Finally, we are seeking to create two new job classifications, claims analyst and principal electric service planner. The claims analyst is a mid-management position assigned to the litigation and risk management division of the city attorney's office to handle claim evaluation, investigation, and resolution of government tort claims with collaboration of support staff and with legal review. This position will also coordinate case claim matters with excess carriers. And the principal electric service planner with Glendale Water and Power, also a mid-management position, we're asking to create this position to ensure the transition to 100% electrification, where this new position will coordinate GWP's efforts along with other city departments, such as the Community Development Department and the city's Information Technology Department. This position shall ensure electrification efforts are managed in a sustainable manner. So this concludes the presentation, and we are available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Do my colleagues have questions? And we also have some cards and at least one caller.
I have a question.
Councilmember Najari, and then Councilmember Devine.
First of all, I mean, thank you for all that information, and my question seems almost trivial, but on the last slide, you talked about hiring a claims analyst. Have we thought about going to like a Carl Warren or a Sedgwick, claims administrator, outsource that rather than bring it into the PERS-related expenses of the city?
Well, that work has been performed out of the city attorney's office for some time. One of our exiting attorneys did manage that work, and so there's a lot of historical knowledge in the, in the office. We have not thought about contracting the work out because there's so much knowledge inside with the team, and adding one position, we thought was the better approach.
Can I? Just one out of a larger team that we're adding?
Correct. And it's coordinated with the litigation team and the...
All right. Doesn't make sense to add to the team. All right. Thank you. That's my question.
Question?
Thank you for this report, and I know, you know, we've packed a lot into this one item here. One thing that I wanted to check on with regard to our staff vacancies, because you talked about that, Mr. Galanian, about, I think you said 1,603 positions that we have authorized, and 1,370 are filled. So I just did a quick calculation, that's like 14, 15% vacancies. What's been our history on that? We run, I'm sure, always a certain level of vacancies, but is this extreme? What did we look like five years ago, 10 years ago? Do you have any idea of that?
Mayor Kusakam, Member City Council, Councilmember Brotman. I wouldn't say this is an extreme. We have maintained similar vacancy levels over the last few years. However, after the pandemic, as you've probably read articles in the media, we have seen an increased number of departures from not just city of Glendale, other cities, as well as the private industry. So there's been a large number of turnover. I believe this year, we, we've had something like over 300 employees who have left for one reason or the other, but we have been recruiting over 220, I believe, positions. So it's like a revolving door. Again, I wouldn't say this was an extreme. We have been able to maintain this level of vacancy. However, I would submit to you that it's not sustainable at this rate, and with Ms. Adams at the helm of the HR department, we will be making some streamlining changes to the process in an effort to expedite the recruitment. And we also, for example, in the fire department, our fire chief has, new fire chief has ideas about improving that process, at least in the fire department. So not an extreme, but it's been higher after the, especially after the pandemic.
So it is at the high end now of what we've experienced in recent years?
Yes, but not by much.
Not by much?
Yes. Councilmember Devine, and then Councilmember Osotia.
You know, our residents and people here in the audience might be thinking, why are we, why are we, you know, giving retention pay, et cetera? And I think it behooves us to explain how serious the deficit in our lineman positions is at this time. The fact that, and I believe it was, we were told that L.A. is giving them like a 27% pay hike, which is unprecedented as far as I'm concerned. But I, can you please let the audience and those that are watching know about the numbers that we're talking about of linemen? Because I think that's really important to understand why we're doing this.
Yes, definitely. Councilmember Devine, if I may, I'm going to invite Mark Young, our general manager of GWP, who can provide those precise numbers and from, from his mouth, the concerns that we have for that group of employee in that division.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Devine, Mark Young. We have an apprentice training program for our linemen, and it's a four-year program. And as soon as the linemen are getting their certification and they're jumping ship to other, other areas that are more lucrative. We normally have about 25 linemen, or we have started out with 25 linemen, we're down to five. And we have an opening, a consistent opening, trying to recruit linemen, and nobody will come to Glendale because we're extremely underpaid. When I looked at it a few months ago, we were about $15,000 underpaid compared to Burbank and Pasadena, but they're also experiencing the problems because, excuse me, the contractors in Los Angeles are paying very, very high money, and I believe that their pay raise was up to 41%.
It's a range from 27 to 40%, yes.
And talk about, if you would please, the training process and how, how many linemen you need to train?
Oh, yes.
And what you're dealing with, with, how many linemen did you say?
We have five.
Five.
So our linemen, we have an apprentice program, and it's, I believe it's two apprentices per lineman. So we're at a critical space right now that the most... So we're at a critical space right now that the most apprentices that we can have are 10. And if one lineman were to leave, that, those two apprentices would also have to be terminated because we wouldn't be able to maintain their apprentice program. So we're trying desperately to retain our linemen and working diligently in the apprentice program so that we can cultivate our own. We could brag a little bit, everybody loves to take Glendale linemen because we train them so well.
Right, right. Thank you. I, I just wanted everyone to understand the seriousness of the reason why we're doing this, why we're affording more money for retention pay and, and other appropriations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment on this before we hear from the public? Okay. Councilmember Asatrian, okay. First speaker will be Herbert Milano. And how many folks do we have on, on the phones? Just one, all right? Mr. Milano, go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Mayor Kasakian, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. I wish this particular action, I didn't have it into two very distinct topics so that we could address each one of those, the payment issue and the financial reports issue, which will at least merit three minutes of our time. So I'd like to make my focus on the logic that is behind the method of compensation. The city pays the employees two ways primarily, the take-home pay and the benefits. And these benefits are not necessarily take-home pay, but they are significant. They are significant to the terms of tens of millions of dollars extra money every time the pension system fails. But somehow that pension payment that the city makes is not counted. It's almost as if it were invisible money, not accounted for the employees, and I think it ought to. The, for the fire and police, it's over 50% of their pay. That is a substantial amount, and every time CalPERS loses, and they had a shortfall of 14% this past year, which the taxpayer must pay as a guarantor to that pension system, whereas the public, we don't get any of that guarantee. There is also the issue of what is the percentage of medical payment paid by the city? It is a substantial portion of those medical costs that the city pays. And every time the city pays either CalPERS or the additional medical cost, that's money that's not available in the general fund. It means that roads don't get built, parks don't get attended, social programs don't get attended too. And the public doesn't get those guarantees of having our pensions subsidized by, by the public, by the general public and the taxpayer. The percentage of inflation, if we had an 8% inflation rate and you have a $200,000 salary, you don't get $16,000 more in, let's say, food costs. You don't get another $16,000 worth of, of energy costs, right? You don't get $16,000 more of, of medical costs because this, again, the city's paying for the bulk of the, of the medical cost. So it is disingenuous to use the inflation rate as applied to the total amount. And there's another issue, which is for most permanent employees, they already own a home, which means that the value of their assets increased, which means that very likely their payments also decreased if they, if they refinanced their mortgages. So there is a discrepancy with the way this information is being presented to the public. I suggest that when it comes to the extrinsic motivation that is inherent in this request, which means I, as an employee, will not remain in the city unless you give me $3,500. Well, if that's the case, then request that the $3,500 be refunded if they leave the city in the next two years, right? There is something very, very missing in here. We call them public servants, and on the one hand, they say, if I don't get that $3,500, I'm leaving irrespective of how much you get paid. If you get paid $300,000 a year, will that $3,500 be necessary? If the money is necessary for linemen, then less budgeted for the linemen and preserve and increase those necessary positions. But I think that the city needs to look at these financial statements and review them prior to the beginning of the budget study sessions. There are too many topics in here that merit your discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Josh Luna.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, City Council and City staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Josh Luna, and I come to you as the Vice President of the Glendale Police Officers Association. We are proud to present, represent over 225 men and women of the Glendale Police Department. On behalf of all the members we represent, we want to publicly thank you for your kind and thoughtful actions to aid all of the city employees through this period of record inflation and unexpected medical rate increases. The past two years have been trying and challenging times for everyone, but as you all have seen, our members have remained steadfast in their commitment to providing world-class policing for the city and for everyone that lives, works, and visits Glendale. The members we represent are proud to work for a city that stands behind and values all of its employees. Your actions tonight show our members the value you place on their commitment to this city. We would also like to thank the city management team, the Human Resources Department, the Financial Department, as their work greatly assisted in moving this forward, as they too value the exceptional work of every employee. Again, on behalf of the Glendale Police Officers Association, we all thank you.
Thank you, Allison Finch.
Mayor Kasakian and members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Allison Finch, and I am the President of the Glendale Management Association. On behalf of GMA Board of Membership, we wanted to extend our gratitude to the City Council and the city staff for the support for the inflation relief, medical premiums, and salary adjustments. As President, I have heard from many members on how inflation and the sudden increase in premiums have affected their lives. We appreciate City Council's recognition of these issues and the steps taken to support all city employees. We look forward to continued conversations regarding challenges that employees continue to face. Thank you again, Mayor Ardi Kasakian, members, council members, Elenis Satrian, Paula Devine, Arun Ajarian, Dan Brotman, City Manager Rubik Galdean, Assistant City Manager John Tectalian, Chief Human Resources Paula Adams, and Director of Finance and Information Technology Jason Bradford. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ara Zakarian.
My union counterparts are going to make mine seem very long, so I apologize in advance. Mayor Kasakian, members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Ara Zakarian, Vice President of Glendale Firefighters Association Local 776. The Glendale Firefighters Association is committed to supporting the vision, the goals and objectives, and is committed to building an outstanding foundation with our council, our residents, and all city groups. Local 776 is represented here tonight by our members and their families, and we're appreciative about the collective goal to respect the diversity of our city and the collective desire to improve the quality of life for our residents, visitors, and firefighters. We are proud, me personally, I'm proud to represent the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department and thank you today for the decision that you've made. As many of you are aware, early in 2022, all the city's labor groups are notified about a dramatic increase in our health care, which for most families was upwards of up to 30%. The increase in premiums were up to about $350 more a month and more than $1,000 a month in total. With the GFPA already paying the highest amount for health care, this new increase and, and insurance rates threaten to impact our families and all of our members directly. As reported, this increase was in part because of the use our members experienced during the COVID-19 pandemic. The rank and file in our membership and the members itself of Local 776 and the Fire Department were on the front lines of the, of the pandemic by continuing to save lives, protect property, fight fires, and coordinate vaccinations. This is the oath we took, it's who we are, we're firefighters. However, through all the obstacles overcome collectively as the city. And the increase, excuse me, the increase in health care, which was not the city's decision, was an enormous financial impact for our members. In addition, the city has had a record number of employee separations in 2022, and the recruitment and retention crisis may be knocking on our door as well. 776 will always put forth our best effort to plan, protect, and provide for its members. Furthermore, we would like to thank City Manager Rubik Galanian, Assistant City Manager John Tectalian, and City Council for their support and their constant desire to appreciate its firefighters. We are grateful for the opportunity to be part of the HBC and be able to investigate other avenues to not only positively impact our members, but the city as well. As public safety members and most importantly, as firefighters, we stand united with our staffing council and all city groups. Today, the council has proudly illustrated and demonstrated the place of priority on its firefighters and all city employees. We are thankful for the actions taken here today to help its firefighters. As history shows, 776 has always worked collectively with the city, deferring raises on multiple contracts, cutting approximately 24 positions, and all while making record numbers in workload, call volume, and overall efficiency. Through all these items, the Glendale Firefighters Association has and will always place a priority on its community here in Glendale. We are grateful for the support from the council. We understand and truly see the positive impact you have all made here today. And to our spouses and our children as well at home watching, we appreciate the hard work, ethics, and experience and commitment to public safety this council and executive staff will continue to have. Thank you specifically to the entire city staff, the council. Would like to thank Human Resources Director Paula Adams and her staff. Would like to thank Jason Bradford and his staff as well for working with us. We are confident that your service and determination will ensure that our city provides first firefighters and all first responders. I thank you from my, from the bottom of my heart, and thank you for working with us.
Thank you, Mr. Zakarian. Who are we, how many folks do we have on the phones?
We have one caller.
Okay, let's go to the telephone, sir.
Our caller is Orlando Urquides. Orlando, you're on, on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and respected members of the council. My name is Orlando Urquides Jr., and I am the President of the Glendale City Employees Association. First of all, let me say I'm very sorry that I was unable to attend in person tonight, but we do have some of the membership and our board directors in the audience tonight to help me express our sincere thanks and gratitude for acknowledging your workforce in this way and taking notice of the financial pressures we're facing. Undoubtedly, there are different degrees of relief felt by the different bargaining units represented here tonight, but I can assure, I can assure you that the impact for the general employee and their gratitude is greater than you, you may be aware. See, this money will allow many of my members to catch up on late mortgages and rent. It will go towards fixing the car they couldn't fix otherwise. It will pay for the overdue bills set aside because our sub-average incomes can no longer sustain them. Thank you so much for making the general employee's holiday much easier to participate in. We hope this is a start or a continuation, maybe, of more, you know, recognition in the form of comparable salary adjustments, because we work for an amazing city, and you have a workforce dedicated to what our residents deserve, and, and that's A-plus services. We are so grateful, tiny Tim gets his legs this year, and we're hopeful he can get a bike soon too. The GCEA appreciates this gesture sincerely. And as council takes time off for the holidays to be with their families, we wish you blessings as your motion and approval tonight will indeed sincerely bless us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There are no more callers. Any comments? There's no comments? Does, I mean, go ahead, Councilmember Asatrian.
I actually have questions and comments.
Go ahead, questions and comments, now would be a good time.
Mr. Bradford, can you walk us through the, the reserves? And I, I believe we're at 34.4%?
That's Councilmember Asatrian, members of the council, that is correct. We, that's how we ended the, the year. But when we roll that fund balance forward and we look at the 2223 budget, it is a $290 million budget, final budget, so the reserve percentage is about 29.6%, I believe. So the unassigned and charter reserve, the charter reserve is actually required by our charter. We are required to put 50% aside into the charter reserve of the, of the property taxes. And so that is basically our floor, if you will, for the, as low as our reserve could go. So based on our 2223 budget, it'd be about 12 or 13% by charter. And then the, the remaining piece of the reserve is the unassigned piece, which is the result of year, year-over-year general fund surpluses accruing to the, to the unassigned charter reserve. Currently, our, the council policy keeps that unassigned charter reserve at a floor of 25% to 35%. We have surveyed other cities. We are on the high side, conservative, if you will. The cities we surveyed, their reserve percentages range from 10 to 25%.
What got us to the high end of our, of our own scale? I'm trying to understand, like, what catastrophe are we waiting for or are we preparing for to be at this number?
So Councilmember Asatrian, members of the council, it is the ultimate rainy day fund. So natural catastrophes, disasters, economic boons, busts, but certainly that's, this reserve percentage has historically been set high, and it's just been, historically, Glendale has been a fiscally conservative city.
So I, I mean, that, it's one thing for us to be more fiscally conservative than other cities, which I'm all for, but again, that range and how much we're, we're continuously saving, and when you're talking about, let's say, natural disasters, for example, FEMA comes in at that point, right? And so, you know, as I, as I was looking at the finances, I was thinking about, you know, what, what is that recommended marker between our own, the, the range that we've placed for ourselves, where we're able to make more investments into our communities and our small businesses, which, which will then generate more revenue? And so if, if you have additional comments on that, I, I'd really like some background on this.
Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council, Councilmember Asatrian, as was noted, this policy was not set by staff. It was, over the years, it's been previous councils' policy primarily based on the conservative nature of the environment at the time. And previous councils felt that a 25 to 35% is what they're comfortable as far as the, what they'd like to see in our fund balance and in our reserves. And that can be changed by the vote of the council.
So I'm not really looking for the change in that, in that range. What I'm trying to understand historically, between that 25 and 35% marker, you know, have we always stayed at the high end of that 35? Or has it just increased year by year by year, and then we're now at 34.4?
Well, I don't have the exact figures at my fingertips. I can tell the council that it has fluctuated over the years, but it has been maintained between 25 to 35%.
We'll have to give that, that number for you, Councilmember Asatrian.
That's fine. I, I think it would be worthwhile as, you know, I think during this budget session and, you know, as we're talking about our own work plan that we're putting together, for us, I think not just looking at continuing to remain fiscally conservative, but also what are some opportunities where we remain within that range, but maybe go, go lower, or we're investing money back into our communities, and we're investing money into our small businesses, which I think will just increase our numbers overall.
Most definitely, Councilmember Asatrian. As a matter of fact, during the, the previous, this last fiscal year's budget review process, council at the time decided to lower the high end of the percentage of the reserve funds to a lower rate. So that's a possibility, and come April, probably of next year, when we start the budget review process, that will be an option to look into.
The mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. No, I was, I was actually gonna say something similar, yeah. In our last budget cycle, and you weren't on council then, we actually did have that discussion, and I remember Councilmember Devine probably was the first one to say, you know, look, you know, we, we should start spending that down a little bit. So I think, and Mr. Bradford, you can confirm, I think as our, our projection is at the end of this fiscal year, we're going to be down at 30. Yeah, so we are, we did kind of consciously say, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, invest a little bit more into the community, if that's the way you want to put it, and we're going to allow that to drop a little bit more. And I think going forward, you know, one of the kind of general comments here is, you know, this budget all looks really good. know, "This budget all looks really good, and we're feeling good about this year because we have a balanced budget, and I think we're feeling good about our ability to balance the budget next year, but the year after that, it doesn't look too good, right? And we don't have any more ARPA funds from the government. We've got rising pension costs." So I think very much we're going to need to dip into some of this, and even this is not going to balance our budget. I think we've got some tough conversations that we're going to have to have over the next year about what we do, because in a couple of years, we're going to be making these decisions about, do we cut services? Do we try to do more with less? I don't know that staff can. I think the wheels are already coming off the bus. But, you know, are there savings? Or are we going to go after new sources of revenue? And those, I mean, so that's kind of the big picture, is I'm looking at all this. This is all great. We feel really good. It's great that we can kind of shore up morale. And on that point, I would just say, I think some of the money that we're, you know, we have this budget savings, right? And a big part of the budget savings is that staff has been doing more with less. They have been under, you know, underspending. They've been, you know, they haven't hit their numbers. And in a sense, what we're doing is we're kind of thanking them for that, turning around and kind of returning some of that to them because they've all been working so hard with fewer, you know, a lot of people kind of doing two jobs at the same time. So that's kind of my big picture on this.
Okay. Councilmember Asatrian, did you have anything you wish said?
Are we going through comments or?
You can do either. You can ask questions or comment.
So I'll just make a couple of comments with respect to the medical increase and all that. I think it's really critical for us to take care of our employees and how we treat our employees internally. That includes compensation. That includes ensuring that we're providing a work environment that's sustainable. I'm not confident how much we can stretch out this "do more with less" because with that comes also burnout, which forces employees to leave. My understanding is that across the board, for the most part, we're not competitive with other cities as it comes to pay. As it comes to the medical costs and increases, I know that I requested for a new RFP to be put out, you know, and to the staff, I'm sorry that it took longer than it should have, at least for what I believe, and you having to cover such increases that came to you out of nowhere. You know, we have employees that also get paid $15, $17 an hour, and that may be the minimum living wage, but that's not a living wage in Los Angeles and definitely not in Glendale. And so I hope that, you know, as we're looking at our salaries moving forward, I understand it's a big responsibility that we're taking on, that we also look at how we're ensuring that we're taking care of our employees in a way where they're actually able to put food on their table without having two jobs or three jobs to do so. And so I wanted to thank the staff for your report, and you have my full support on this.
Councilmember Devine?
I think something that we have to, everyone has to remember is the fact that every employee in this city does not make $200,000 or $300,000 a year. We have employees, staff members, that work very hard for $50,000, $60,000, $70,000. And I think that since we have seen this extra funding that we, extra money that we have, revenue that we have, I think this was an opportune time because of all the raises in the insurance, medical, et cetera, this was a perfect time to help staff and help those of our employees who need help at this time. I have always been a proponent of the fact that our reserve is too high. I found that out when I first came on council and went to start going to conferences, and cities were talking about their reserve was 10%, 15%. I think, wow, ours was like 25, almost 30 back then. And so even this afternoon, I mentioned that, you know, we could dip into our revenue for our streets, our sewers. We heard a report today about our sewers and how, you know, we have, there's a dire need for us to work on our infrastructure. I know that we talked about Measure S funding for roads, for streets and other infrastructure, and the reserve is also, I think, there for us to think about and consider. But I hope, and well, I know that staff is appreciative of this gift, and I know that we, I know, city attorney, we are working on an insurance medical conglomerate, aren't we, of some kind of new policy where we're working with other cities so that the rates are not?
That's only for liability, sure, insurance.
Only liability, okay, okay, all right. Well, anyway, I am ready to approve this item 1 through 10, and I just, like I say, I know that everyone appreciates what we're doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. I'll be brief. A lot has been said. I agree with so much of it. A city is a service provider for the most part, and our employees are our frontline service providers. So we need to take care of our employees. This was an opportunity with a little bit of surplus in the budget to give back to the employees and help them along. We want to keep them. We don't want to lose them to any other city or any other county, whether it's our police, fire, our linemen, our, you know, plant checkers, or our neighborhood service inspectors, whatever that may be. We want to retain our workforce. It makes for a healthy city. I'm happy to be with council in offering this little boost. I'm not ashamed of having a large city reserve. I think that's what makes us a strong city. There will be stuff that happens that don't even have to be natural catastrophes. It can be an increase in the PERS contribution rate, which, as Mr. Brotman pointed out, is going to start eating away at that reserve. So I don't think we should start spending it out. I think we need to hold on. You can't compare us to a city like Pasadena or Montebello or to our city attorney colleague, El Monte, with very narrow reserves. They're sweating bullets every time something happens. Glendale is a strong city because we have strong reserves and, for the most part, a fiscal, a conservative history. Not politically conservative, although we've had some of that, fiscally conservative, and there is no shame in that.
With that, I mean, I, obviously, I think that we need to recognize the impacts of what happens in the national economy and the impacts it has on our local businesses as well as on our employees. It's one of the reasons why, when we had the opportunity at the outset of COVID, we decided to take Measure S funds and pump it right back into the very place where it came from, which is our local economy, by helping our merchants and businesses and small mom and pop shops. And additionally, you know, when we have employees that work hard to provide the services that our residents have come to expect from us, when we have an opportunity, when we have an opportunity like this, rather, where we have funds that were given, that have been said that can be used for such a use, to be able to reward and give the employees some relief in the face of inflation, increasing healthcare costs, and a number of other stress factors. I know that the perception may be that employees in municipalities are quote-unquote "living high on the hog." I think that that is something that has always been prevalent, unfortunately, in our culture in this country. I remember as city clerk, once going through the archives and coming across a photograph from the 1930s, at the height of the Great Depression, of a number of activists gather on the steps of City Hall saying, "City employees are," and this is happening in Glendale, saying that Glendale employees are paid too much, right? Unfortunately, oftentimes, we are quick to criticize the individuals who are out there making sure that we have electricity, we have running water, the streets are paved, our neighborhoods are safe, and very rarely do we have opportunities to also recognize them in such a way. And so when we do, we have to make, show that appreciation. I don't want to get into the conversation about reserves because we're going to have, as Councilmember Brotman outlined, there's going to be a lot of tough discussions moving forward, and I want all the employees who are here today to express their gratitude to also realize that you're a part of this discussion, and we're going to have to have some very tough choices and decisions to make going forward, as have been in the past. Things are not going to get easier, they're going to get harder, but we appreciate everything that you do, and this is one small way of showing that. I also want to remind folks who may be critical of employees, saying, "Well, city employees are paid too much," or "This is such a cushy job." During the pandemic, you know, someone may have been working at the city and was someone who did not have the luxury to stay home. That doesn't mean if it's a two-income household that their spouse or significant other had the same luxury of still having a job and still having healthcare benefits. I know many city employees were very severely impacted by COVID, whether the spouse had worked somewhere else that didn't extend some of the benefits of working from home or having healthcare throughout the pandemic, et cetera. So let's not paint everyone with a broad brush, but I think this is one small gesture of appreciation that we can make at this time. So with that, who would like to make the motion?
I'll move the item 1 through 10.
Items 1 through 10 can be adopted all at once. The city attorney is giving us the nod to go ahead. Who would like to second it?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Asatrian. Let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Let us move on to the next item. Thank you.
Next item, item C, is Glendale Water and Power Regarding Grayson Repowering Project and GWP Power Supply Planning.
We'd like to ask everyone who's, as you're leaving the chambers, we ask that you do so as quietly as possible, as we have a number of items still before us.
One, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Glendale, California, Amending Resolution 22-34 to Provide Direction to Staff Regarding the Implementation of the Grayson Repowering Project Utilizing Five Wartzilla Engines, Amending Resolution 22-127 to Add the Procurement of Battery Energy Storage System to the Scope of the Requests for Proposals for the Balance of the Site Work and Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Execute a Contract and All Related and Necessary Documents for the Engineering, Procurement, and Construction of Five Wartzilla Engines and Associated Power Island Equipment and Facilities. Two, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Glendale, California, Amending Resolution 22-34 to Provide Direction to Staff Regarding the Implementation of the Grayson Repowering Project Utilizing Three Wartzilla Engines, Amending Resolution 22-127 to Add the Procurement of Battery Energy Storage System to the Scope of the Requests for Proposals for the Balance of Site Work and Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Execute a Contract and All Related and Necessary Documents for the Engineering, Procurement, and Construction of Three Wartzilla Engines and Associated Power Island Equipment and Facilities. Three, Motion Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Enter into Collectible Work Authorization (CWA) Agreement with the Southern California Gas Company in the Not to Exceed Amount of $400,000 for Services Related to the Improvement and Upgrade of Southern California Gas Company Facilities Related to the Grayson Repowering Project. The Form of Said Agreement shall be Subject to the Approval of the City Attorney.
Yes. Members of the city council, here we are again in front of you regarding the Grayson Power Plant. As you know, Grayson provides a vital source of local generation to generate power when demand exceeds the combined capacity of local rooftop solar, demand response, energy efficiency, and GWP Limited Transmission Imports. The city council and the previous city council have made great strides in directing staff to reach the goals of clean energy, and Grayson also provides the power needed to cope with contingencies and maintain reserves. After all these years, it's become critical now to take action to modernize Grayson in order for GWP to continue to supply reliable electricity and bridge the gap to the city's transition to 100% renewables. As Pastor Kennison earlier noted, we all have wants and needs, and I submit to you that this is not a want, this is absolutely a need for us, based on the model that Ascent Analytics recently ran, and based on the direction that we have received at council level, local level, as well as state level for electrification. In my opinion, it's crucial that, again, to seek approval from this council for, I would say, at least five Wartzilla engines, but at minimum, five Wartzilla engines to be able to, again, bridge the gap between now and when we provide 100% clean and renewable energy sources. And this will work essentially as insurance for when we need to run these engines. I was very nervous during the last heat wave last summer. We came very close to brownouts, and it was by sheer luck and the hard work of our folks at the power plant that we were able to maintain the old generating systems within the power plant so that we didn't have to go to brownout, but there is no guarantee that we can continue doing that. In addition to that, we, at GWP and at Management Services, we will strive again. We will do, make every effort to accomplish the goals that you have set for 100% clean energy. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Mellon, our Assistant General Manager of Water and Power, who has a PowerPoint presentation for you to recap where we've been and where we stand today and staff's recommendation. We also have staff from the city attorney's office and Mr. Tadev Osean, our consultant, and as well as other GWP staff members to respond to your questions. Mr. Mellon?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, the council members. Scott Mellon, Assistant General Manager of Power Supply at Glendale Water and Power. As you may recall, at the August 16th City Council meeting, council adopted a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Wartzill in North America and authorized a Phase II limited notice to proceed engineering services for three Wartzill engines. This update is to provide the city council's direction and seek approval of various contracts, amendments, and procurement methodologies described in this report in order to implement the city council's direction regarding the Grayson Repowering Project. Phase II limited notice to proceed, our LNTP for engineering services, only had its kickoff meeting, had its kickoff meeting on October 28th. We have received preliminary drawings, and things are moving along at a steady pace. Unit 9 separation effort kicked off on November 3rd, with the anticipated separation completion occurring in mid-May of 2023. The demolition site improvement proposals are due December 15th. We had a typo in the Exhibit 1 that stated February 15th, so we wanted to state that correction. Apologize for that. Unit 9 South Coast Air Quality Management District Rule 1135 Compliance Application has been submitted. The balance of site EPC RFP was originally going to be issued on December 15th, but that has been moved to January 12th in order to make a few changes related to the next item, which is that Tesla EPC contract negotiations have been terminated. Essentially, the city and Tesla have discussed terms related to the EPC and the LTSA but cannot come to an agreement. Among others, the primary issues of difference, in addition to the issues raised in the background here, include the timeframe between EPC contract execution and the equipment delivery slash project completion necessary to meet the project schedule, a variable price adjustment based on lithium pricing, vendor request for bilateral indemnification, and the city's bonding requirements, which are set pursuant to California state law and required for public works contracts. Other terms upon which parties could not agree include vendor provisions for choice of law and arbitration of disputes faced in Texas. As a result, parties have terminated negotiations, and staff is now seeking city council's authorization to include procurement and installation of a BES. to include procurement and installation of a BEZ as part of the balance of site EPC contractor scope. The BOSEPC contract will have a BEZ specification with which they must comply, but will be free to offer Tesla or other competing systems in meeting the system's specifications. So it doesn't remove Tesla from being in. So as part of the Grayson Repower Project, we have some work that we need to do with Southern California Gas. They need to perform some work on the system which currently serves the Grayson Power Plant. Phase 1 of this work consists of decommissioning, removal of equipment, engineering research analysis, and design. Phase 2 will consist of construction. Each phase will require separate SoCalGas collective work authorization to proceed. The engineer's cost estimate for Phase 1 is about $400,000. Funds for Phase 1 have been appropriated and available through the Glendale Water and Power Electric Depreciation Fund. Cost estimates for Phase 2 will be depending, will depend on the results of Phase 1. All right, so before we broach the subject of the appropriate number of engines at Grayson, I thought it might be beneficial to go over the updated tables for capacity and energy in the current council report. I think it's important to clarify that these concepts are multi-dimensional. The capacity and energy examples that were provided in the August 16th report, the council have been updated here for continuity and were initially provided as a means to simplify these complex scenarios. To comply with California Energy Commission, the CEC requirements, Glendale Water and Power must maintain sufficient generation resources to meet Glendale's peak demand, as well as provide adequate reserves. This is essentially both for meeting the criteria of a successful Integrated Resource Plan, or IRP, as well as meeting our operational obligations to our balancing authority, Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Glendale's historic peak load is 346 megawatts, and that was in 2017. And on that day, Glendale Water and Power delivered 5,654 megawatt hours of energy. Peak load in subsequent years has been similar in form and relative magnitude, and is now expected to grow with increasing emphasis. Part of that emphasis is associated to electrification of buildings and vehicles, as well as continued GWP is working with Ascend Analytics to develop models in preparation for the 2024 IRP. The loss of load model used to identify hours each month over multiple years that have insufficient capacity to meet load forecasts a peak load of 456 megawatts in 2027. This model includes real-world projects and system forecasts like Glendale's share of the CEC projected transportation electrification numbers, one multi-use project at the current Sears building location, and one low-income housing project on Pioneer Drive, together equalling eight megawatts, and a movie sound studio located on San Fernando Road not far from the Grayson Power Plant that is the equivalent of 10 megawatts. The latter two being real examples of low growth in the very near future. Table, table in this slide identifies the megawatt coverage needed for both models under the N minus 1 and N minus 1 minus 1 scenario. Essentially, Glendale Water and Power must keep energy sources in reserve in order to produce sufficient energy to meet the two largest energy supplies to Glendale in case they are lost or cannot be delivered to Glendale's electric grid. This next table provides a source of generation available to cover the city's capacity requirements. The column identifies the original capacity of the numbers provided with the original report to council on August 16th, 2022, and there is an assumption that all these resources will be developed and operating at full capacity. Column identified as current capacity represents a three Wartzilla engine installation at Grayson, has the Sunrun virtual power plant project removed since Sunrun withdrew their proposal, and assumes the remaining 25 megawatts of distributed energy resources will be fully utilized as 10 megawatts of demand response active for a four-hour period, and 15 megawatts of city-owned solar, consistent with potential projects currently identified by Glendale Water and Power. Our goal, however, is to continue to expand the city-owned solar to make up for that loss of Sunrun. As you can see, there's a significant difference, about 62 megawatts, between the original capacity estimates and the current capacity representing our current situation. I felt it was important to try and lay out a scenario that was more representative of our current sight of the future. Next slide identifies the difference between the capacity of Glendale Water and Power must plan to provide and the capacity that is available. Mr. Utele, in the August 2022 report to council, when assuming all resources are implemented, available, and operating at maximum capacity at the same time, there appears to be a margin of 42 megawatts. When taking the difference between the original capacity column total and the 2019 IRP model total, that's 604 minus 562 equals 42 megawatts of available capacity. However, that's not an accurate depiction of the available resources. I'd rather a best-case evaluation, and it assumes all resources are maximally available at the same time as the peak load. Not all resources are available around the clock. For example, solar is time-limited, batteries, energy demand response, and some resources such as our Elan Solar Site are energy-limited. Work can only be called on for a limited time. In the Elan specific case, LADWP has sole control over the batteries, and they can choose to use it as they see fit, which may not be coincident with our need. Additionally, existing transmission is regularly derated or just not available during peak-load events, as transmission lines reach their thermal limits and balancing authorities hold on to available capacity in preparation for worsening conditions. In fact, this is exactly what occurred in September during the heat storm that drove the CISO peak demand almost 2,000 megawatts higher than their previous high, all-time high. In reviewing Glendale Water and Power's current capacity in comparison to either our 2019 IRP model or the new model totals, we see that Glendale is short capacity by either 20 megawatts or 78 megawatts, respectively. This means that in both model scenarios, Glendale Water and Power would be unable to meet our system obligations or our customer obligations at peak load with only three Wartzilla engines. As confirmed by LADWP, the balancing authority, Glendale Water and Power would need to reduce or shed load in real time to maintain reserve capacity for the N minus 1 and N minus 1 minus 1 contingencies. Controlled shedding of load to meet our system obligation means rolling blackouts. This next slide, yes, I guess what I'd like the council to take away from this table is that we acknowledge with simplistic approach to tracking energy requirements, it is possible to make both 3 and 5 engine scenarios work for the highest load day in 2027. You'll notice that there are changes in the two columns which I've highlighted. The Grayson Unit 9 value went down in the current energy, the BEZ contribution for peak load, or sorry, the Grayson Wartzilla engines during the peak load went up from column to column, and our local new DR obviously went down because we had less than I was contributing in this scenario. Important to recognize that although the numbers show under both a 5 and 3 Wartzilla engine scenarios, it is hypothetically possible for Glendale Water and Power to supply energy required. The following factors, the following factors must be taken into consideration. There will be a significant increase in the use of the three Wartzilla engines, which increases the risk of exceeding defined permit limitations. A present, or permit, in each engine is limited to 50 starts and 225 hours in any month, and 280 starts in 1,120 hours in a year. It's reasonable to assume that with the limited internal resources available to Glendale Water and Power over the course of the year, Glendale Water and Power would reach the permit limit before the end of the calendar year, meaning we would not be able to use. These current scenarios only consider the historical peak load day of 346 megawatts and do not reflect the forecasted peak load day of 456 megawatts in 2027. Identified in the loss-load model I provided before, that was being, that's being developed for the 2024 IRP. From an operational perspective, these scenarios were developed with the full knowledge of how the loads would look in advance, allowing for the most efficient dispatching of available resources. However, real-time operation relies on forecasted conditions and experience, in which an operator must keep some resources in reserve to plan for the possibility of an N minus 1 or N minus 1 minus 1 condition. That condition describes the most current event for an operator can, those bad-case scenarios, they can shift hourly. Essentially, while this method is relatively simple to understand, it's also quite unsophisticated and does not consider the complexities of operating a normal electric grid. Enter stochastic analysis. Following graphs over the next three slides were generated by Ascend Analytics, a software and data analytic company that develops advanced simulation or stochastic models for utilities. In fact, Burbank and LADWP use them. In fact, Ascend Analytics charted the path for how Hawaii could become 100% renewable back in 2018, as well as performing a similar 100% clean energy study for Glendale in 2021. They're very capable of providing this accurate information. The models that Ascend creates are used to assist in the understanding of forecasted load development and provide guidance in generating integrated resource plans. Ascend uses a considerable amount of GWP-specific historical load data and hundreds of iterations to generate future load profiles. GWP is currently working with Ascend to determine what the future of Glendale's grid might look like in her development of the 2024 IRP. Graphs on these three slides used a dispatch model, which considers how to optimally apply available resources, and were developed to determine if Glendale Water Power had sufficient resources to meet, to meet that N minus 1 and N minus 1 minus 1 event. All three considered three different peak-load days of 400, 450, and 500 megawatts. As can be seen in the first scenario with three Wartzilla engines, a 400-megawatt peak-load day experiencing an N minus 1 or N minus 1 minus 1 event can be successfully covered. However, the 450-megawatt and the 500-megawatt days cannot be. Those are fails. Before we go on to the next two slides, I will emphasize, looking at this structure and how we map out how these resources be used, the 500-megawatt scenario is far less likely than the 400 or the 450. And that, I'm letting you know that ahead of time because that is, you know, from a probabilistic standpoint, something that is much, much less likely, and we've already determined that with Ascend Analytics. So the most likely scenarios are the 400 and the 450. So the, in the second scenario, the five engines, you, while the 450-megawatt peak-load day is very close, it, it's also a fail. So the 400, it's a pass, and the five engines, the 450 is a fail also. We ran a six-engine model also, just for clarification. Six-engine does meet the 400 and the 450, but it fails on the 500. It's worth noting a few things related to the dispatch model developed. This model considers the addition of the 18 megawatts for the three private and city-funded development projects that are projected to come online in 2025, as well as additional electric vehicle loads anticipated by the CEC. Keep this moving. So the issue is awaiting the number of engines decision. There are a few aspects of the repower project that are contingent upon the final decision for the number of engines. Wartzilla EPC contract pricing would be driven by the number of units, and any complexities may be associated with non-standard installations. Incidentally, the standard Wartzilla package is six units, and Glendale staff considered this when they requested only five units to support the system back in 2018. South Coast Air Quality Management District, air permitting deadline for the Grayson site is fast approaching with the application deadline of December 31st, 2022. The interconnection study with LADWP depends on the number of Wartzilla engines and the size of battery storage. Study cannot be undertaken and completed until these decisions are finalized. Bond financing cannot proceed until the number of engines and battery sizing is clarified, as it dictates the breadth and complexity of the project design. Also, as a matter of maintaining system stability and reliability, it's prudent to consider the implications of when to shut down units 1 through 5 and 8A, ABC, as it correlates the overall Grayson project.
Can I, can I ask how much, how many more slides we have? Because I want to be able to be respectful of everyone's time, and I know that it's an important task.
This is the last one, essentially.
Okay. Continue.
Thank you. Number of Wartzilla engines. So as the Ascend Analytics model clarified, and has recent decisions toward more aggressive electrification efforts approved by council confirm, Glendale Water and Power staff recommends five Wartzilla engines to support present and future Glendale electrical system needs. The development of reach codes under performance of currently existing DER programs, the outcome of the recent RFP for new DER options, and the statewide push towards transportation electrification, including a project for the electrification of public buses, the public works buses, sorry, means that our projected system loads will likely be higher than previously determined. GWP recognized the need for continued effort in developing robust DER programs, and in fact, there is no future Glendale without them. This is not an either-or situation. Electrification will continue to grow, which will drive our need to supply reliable, reliable power. DER is a variable research, resource which requires it to be teamed with reserve in-system generation to support it. Regardless of the number of engines authorized tonight, modification to our existing IRP will need to be submitted to the CEC for review of our ability to meet our load and our reserve obligations. Staff recommends the following, and I think that's it. Questions?
All right. I think there will be questions. We have, as it stands right now, 14 cards from the public, as well as at least 13 callers. What is it up to now, 13?
13.
Yeah, we're holding at 13. So those two combined, if we were to allow everyone to speak for two minutes, we're already talking to close to an hour of just public comment. I'm inclined to hear from the public first, but I will defer to my colleagues if they have questions or things that they would like to have clarified from the presentation. I know many of you have already heard the presentation during briefings. So with that, let's go to the individuals, the people who are in the audience first. I know that I had a request from the Glendale Environmental Coalition to speak for a little bit longer than the two minutes, and if they've designated a speaker, I can, I can grant you five if you wish to. Are you okay with that? So we'll have, I believe that's Ms. Unger, if I recognize you under the mask. Hi, Kate. You can, I'll allow you to speak for five, but then after that, we'll have everyone speak for two minutes, give or take. Please be brief. If you can do it under five, I appreciate it. Ms. Unger, go ahead.
Let's see what I can do, and thank you so much, Mayor Kasakian and members of city council and staff. And I'll start off by saying what I should say at the end, but we'll forget to. Happy holidays to everybody. Kate Unger, which I also often forget to say. I wanted to start off by saying, I know we all want the same thing. We want clean and reliable energy for Glendale, and we want utility that's powered by energy sources that don't harm our health, don't worsen climate impacts, and meet our needs by providing electricity reliably in multi-day heat storms. So what's the best way to get there? I know that reasonable people can answer the question differently, and we all need to respect that as we work together to find the best solution for our city. And that's my starting point. Let's all work together. We are facing a challenge that's really unprecedented in the history of utility planning because of climate change, and we need for, first and foremost, not to make it worse. And that's one principle I think we also can all agree on. So let's do the least damage we possibly can. The other consideration is how do we make Glendale's energy plan sound? There's the old way of doing things, more thermal capacity in a power plant, but we don't need that to have a sound, reliable energy plan. I want to highlight in the staff report, the analysis of peak capacity that's needed is based on a really high projection of peak demand. is based on a really high projection of peak demand. GWP itself forecasts peak demand of 330 megawatts in 2027 in a recent filing to the CEC. Ascend has said that Glendale's yearly peak demand tends to match the CEC's 1 in 10 forecast, and the CEC's most recent forecast estimates 328 megawatts in 2027. And that's a 10% chance forecast, right? Not, that's a conservative measure. Amazingly, GWP's new forecast, 128 megawatts higher, 40% increase. Also, keep in mind that since the historic peak in 2017, we haven't exceeded that. In fact, 2021, the peak was 263 megawatts. We're doing something right. We're keeping demand down. Also, wanted to note that the capacity stack that was listed in the, in the slide in the staff report doesn't include several resources that are on the horizon, so it is extremely conservative. It doesn't have even, you know, the current DER RFP, we know is kind of low, but it doesn't have any of that in it, including the potential other projects that might follow on from that, which offer another 20 megawatts. Our 10% solar and storage resolution offers potentially another 75 megawatts. EcoMotion offers maybe up to 100 more. Also, the energy analysis is only for a contingency event, only if those power lines are down. In ordinary operation, Glendale would have access to over 9,000 megawatt hours of energy, or 66% more than needed. Without any local glass generation, it would have over 7,500, or 36% more than needed. Glendale also has a doozy of a conservative reserve margin with that N minus one minus one. It's 164 megawatts. I mean, that's on the order of 40 to 50% reserves. California Public Utilities Commission Planning Reserve Margin, traditionally 15%. They recently raised it to 17%. So GWP has, says we're contractually bound to this incredibly high reserve requirement. We should keep working to reduce that, but in the meantime, let's just see it for what it is. It's a huge insurance policy. How much insurance is prudent to have? A good, healthy policy is great, but if you get too much, it's just wasting money. So let's not stack insurance on top of insurance here. Let's plan smart, not scared. Remember, if we're scared of outages after the old Grayson units are retired, the best thing to do is to get new resources online as fast as possible. New gas units have a two-and-a-half-year construction timeframe. They're not going to do it fast enough. We can do clean solar energy with batteries dispatchable much faster. We do have the potential. The numbers add up. We can do it. It's sound planning in the era of climate catastrophe. We just need leadership from our city council to push it in the right direction. Please lead us to the future, not the past. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. On the dot now. We are up to 17 callers, so let's have the speakers here in the chambers commence. Cole Basemore.
I'm sorry, did you call me?
Cole Basemore.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Kasakian, staff. I was not expecting to go first, but I wanted to start by, I guess echoing a lot of Kate Unger's comments. I think, why don't we look at how to spend this 260 million that we're considering this evening on like incentivizing, incentivizing rooftop solar or demand response, main management? Those things should really be considered first before we decide to invest in such a large fossil fuel investment such as this. I think what EcoMotion has put together includes a lot of really, really strong opportunities, so why are those not being considered? I think we had the opportunity over the last year or so to even start on some of those projects. I'd love to see them start again, diving into that next year. Sorry, tripping over my words here, but I really just would encourage you to consider how to spend this money wisely than on fossil fuel investments. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is David Eisenberg, then Mr. Webb. Glenn Webb will be after Mr. Eisenberg.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. My name is David Eisenberg. I am the Chair of the Verdugo Hills Group of the Sierra Club. We are a local group. We cover Glendale and Burbank. You will hear people that we've, we're all volunteers, so we've called in some, and we have other environmental issues, so you will hear from Earth Justice and our, our chapter. But I've just passed out a, a handout for you for more information that I can say in two minutes, and for those of you in the audience, there's extra copies in the back. You know, I'm hearing a lot of scare tactics, you know? At the last meeting, Mark Young said, oh, three, we can live with three engines. All of a sudden, we need six. Where did that come from? The peak load in the catast, catastrophic heat wave that we had, we didn't approach the 346 that was in the EIR, and all of a sudden, there's all these other peak loads, and the lights are going to go off, and there's nothing in any of this analysis that's talking about demand response. You heard from your consultant Ted Flanagan last week that said he can recover 125 megawatts, and, and a lot of those, 100 of it could be done with programs. There's no incentive for rebates for solar. There's, right now, there's no $5 a month for demand response. It's not worth my trouble for a lot of people. $8 for, you know, to charge your EV off, off-peak? Nothing. There's no incentive for hooking up your EV, and then it's the, everybody's electrifying. Everybody that's living in an existing building, I'm in, I have no control. I'm in a condo. People in apartments, they're not going to electrify. It's not going to happen. No retrofits. And the EV cars, everybody doesn't have money to go out and buy a new EV car. So other people will speak. But thank you.
Thank you. Next is Glenn Webb. Following Mr. Webb will be Mike Borisov.
And do we have a? My name is Glenn Webb, 30-year resident of Glendale. I don't want to talk about the Wartzilla engines and also battery. Next slide. Next slide. The approved IRP, IRP approved by this council, projects a peak Glendale load of 422 megawatts for 2038. We just heard that number raised to 264, I believe, for no apparent reason. And 35 megawatts of additional battery and three Wartzilla engines will meet this peak load, including the N minus one minus one failure condition. Next slide. I've revised my models to account for the latest data available from GWP. The model lists all the resources that are available. Next slide. Includes the N minus one minus one failure rate, 150 megawatts, and it computes the peak power available in our system at 5:00 PM, which is when we get our peak loads. It also computes, computes the worst-case day energy that we need to get through the day to meet the peak load and to maintain the batteries. We've run this model for zero through five Wartzilla engines. Next slide. And with zero to five Wartzilla engines, the peak load tolerance ranges from 313 megawatts with zero Wartzilla engines to 406 megawatts with five Wartzilla engines. That supports the previously GWP's position that five Wartzilla engines were needed to meet a 400-megawatt peak load. That was about six months ago. However, all these options, option zero through five, I'm calling them, have excess energy available on, on the worst-case day. Excess energy of 810 megawatts, which is sufficient to support an additional 35 megawatts of battery. The battery being much more important in terms of our system capability for fault tolerance than is the Wartzilla engine.
Okay.
Next slide.
Mr. Webb, your time is up. Can you please wrap, wrap this up in the next 30 seconds?
I've only got a couple more here, if I could be permitted to finish here. So the excess energy available allows us to add additional battery. Go ahead to the next slide again. And when we add the 35 megawatts of additional battery, we now have a peak tolerance that runs from 370 megawatts with zero Wartzilla engines, up to 463 megawatts, which would account for the, the new number that we just heard tonight. Five Wartzilla engines and 35 megawatts additional battery will account for this 465 or 464 megawatts that was just stated as a new requirement for our peak, peak power. Next slide. My conclusion, 35 megawatts of additional battery and three Wartzilla engines will support a peak load of 426 megawatts, which is what was, what is in the approved IRP for, for our peak projection for 2038. 35 megawatts of additional battery and zero Wartzilla engines will support a peak load of 370 megawatts, which is more than our historical peak load of 346 megawatts.
Thank you.
And there's, there's two more, or if you just go two more charts, that's the final chart, which summarizes the 12 conditions. Go to the last one, please. Option zero through five with no additional battery and option zero B through five B with 35 megawatts additional battery. And the red there indicates the peak load tolerance. In other words, how much peak load do we get, can we get to with that configuration before we begin having blackouts?
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Borisov, followed by Stephanie, I believe it's Schuss.
Schuss. Thank you. Good evening, council members, mayor. So my name is Mike Borisov. I'm the ex-official commissioner for the Sustainability Commission, but I'm here representing myself. At first, I thought all hope was lost, perhaps. I didn't know what to even say at this point. I read the staff report. It was quite daunting for us environmentalists to realize that perhaps battery and solar is not always the solution. It's not feasible in this case. That was until I watched GWP's presentation. So the reason for supporting five Wartzilla engines is because of new electric vehicles and new multifamily developments. That was the bulk reason. I didn't see the new electric reach codes that city council passed a few weeks ago listed in one of the megawattage comparisons. So now, if we are building multifamily development, single-family homes, we require that 50% of the rooftop is now solar, which now would power the vehicles, and with new electric appliances, that's 300% less or more energy efficiency, so that's less power. And I didn't see that in the report, and so I'm not sure why we need five Wartzilla engines instead of three, when the main reason of having five Wartzilla engines is because of projected use of electric vehicles and multifamily developments. Maybe staff can provide us a reason as to why we weren't shown the new electric reach code. Was that like fitted in when we were getting the presentation? It's quite a massive proponent for this, right? I mean, if we're going to have five Wartzilla engines, that's millions of dollars, and we could be saving money and investing that in renewable energy instead. I think that's something to take note. Thank you.
All right. Next is Stephanie Schuss, followed by Karen Cockler. And if I mispronounce anyone's names, please correct me, and I'll try to do better.
My last name's been mispronounced all my life, so.
How, how is the correct?
Schuss.
Schuss.
Like in skiing, which I don't do.
Neither do I, so that makes it two of us. Please.
Anyway, good evening, Mayor Kasakian. I hope I pronounced that right.
Close enough. My name has been mispronounced a lot as well. Let's give her the full time.
And all the other council members. I am Stephanie Schuss, and I'm a 21-year resident of Glendale, known as the Jewel City. So I hope you will ask yourselves, how can a Jewel City be installing what is likely to be, to be the last new gas generation plant in all of California? How can a Jewel City invest many millions of dollars of taxpayer dollars in fossil fuel technology now, instead of first funding clean energy? GWP's own consultant, EcoMotion, reported that Glendale can add over 100 megawatts of energy through innovative clean energy programs. This same consultant stated the need for a culture shift at GWP to make clean energy a priority. I certainly hope all council members are committed to make and support such a shift. Shouldn't our Jewel City be a leader in the state's move to green energy? I appreciate that GWP is now looking into more solar and storage projects, projects that could be up and running before engines at Grayson are even functioning. And Jewel City would give serious thought to this sequence before deciding how to spend those millions of dollars. So I hope your vote tonight will reflect your wish to maintain Glendale's reputation as the Jewel City by voting to fund clean energy and not new fossil fuel-based energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Karen Cockler, followed by Karen Lo. Karen Lo?
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Lo. I've been a resident of Glendale for 25 years, and I find that Glendale is now at a pivotal inflection point. We have to ask ourselves, do we want to rely on industrial age-era fossil fuel that damages our health and environment at great financial cost to our community? Or do we join dozens of other towns and cities in, in California that are already 100% sustained by renewable energy? To me, it's astonishing that we're still having this debate. The answer seems so obvious. If we don't take this step going forward, council members who support expanding gas over renewables will be remembered as those who misspent our money and our time and threatened our health. And Glendale, the last city in the state to expand the use of fossil fuels, will become the poster child for this error. And now we have an unprecedented opportunity here. There are federal and state funds available for transitioning to renewable energy. Issue a new round of RFPs for clean energy. It is time to move into the renewable future. In fact, we're long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Calfian, followed by Irene Varsha Bedyan.
Good evening, council members and city staff and Mayor Kasakian. We have a lot of clean energy potential just coming forward. We have the city's resolution to get to 10% of rooftop solar and storage. We have city-sided solar that we're about to hear from pretty soon, I hope. The many opportunities in the EcoMotion report, alternatives for a virtual power plant, different designs and models, and a redesigned commercial feed-in tariff program. All of these should come first before investments in gas-burning equipment. We need to invest our funds wisely. I was very happy to hear that we are going to be hiring a manager in GWP to look into electrification. We need to be funding more staff and more resources and consultants who can have forward-looking, out-of-the-box approaches to utility planning that focus on distributed, clean, local energy. So a lot is clearly possible. Right now, we're on the cusp of being able to implement it. It's clearly possible to reduce or eliminate the need for the gas engines being proposed tonight, and you're the board of directors here. You can direct us toward a clean energy future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker is Irene Varsha Bedyan, followed by Morgan, Morgan from the Sierra Club.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, council members and city staff. I'm, I've been a resident of Glendale since 1997. I'm really concerned about using gas as a source at Grayson. I'm really concerned about using gas as a source at Grayson, you know, knowing all the climate change's problems. Glendale should not install new gas generation, generator plant in California. It shouldn't be a city, you know, to do that. And we should prioritize and fund clean energy first. Fossil fuel dependency is destroying our global climate. We all know that. With the massive fires, heat waves, floods everywhere, it's a disaster. So, that's what fossil fuel does. And, you know, it's also poisoning our local air, which causes lots of health issues. So, I hope you consider these issues before making a decision. Thank you.
Okay. Morgan? Is it Goodman?
Goodwin.
Goodwin.
And that is good feedback on my handwriting. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I didn't say anything, but I didn't say it was bad handwriting. It's just my eyesight.
Point taken.
Go on.
Good evening, council members. Morgan Goodwin, the Angeles Chapter Director for the Sierra Club, covering Los Angeles and Orange Counties. I was asked to speak here by the Verdugo Hills Group. Our landscape has changed significantly just in the past six months. The city's own consultant, EcoMotion, says that there is a pathway to clean energy using real-world examples that other utilities in other cities have achieved. The electrification push that is underway, that we've heard a lot about causing more demand, is also an opportunity for demand response and innovative solutions that we are not hearing enough about. In addition, the California Air Resources Board has laid out a clear pathway for the state to meet its energy needs without any new gas plants. And we have the historic and truly massive Inflation Reduction Act and other commitments coming from the state and federal governments that really do change the landscape, not just for immediate subsidies, but for the pathway toward that clean energy future that we are all fighting for. Gas is a risk. Gas is expensive, and it's unpredictable. You all know that. And the opportunity cost for investing in the new gas turbines is something that we would like to see spent on far more reliable and trusty pathways, that being renewable energy, demand response, local resources. I'm really glad that we have not heard talk about hydrogen tonight. I know it's been a topic discussed here before, that, hey, maybe we can run these engines off hydrogen. I want to reiterate that we do not think that's a viable idea. Not only is it unproven and would be expensive, but there are a whole number of negatives with hydrogen as a fuel source in plants. We know that we're not going to be 100% clean tomorrow. We know that Glendale is dependent on gas even without these engines, but we're asking you to take this step forward and not build the last gas plant in California. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is John Meyer, John Charles Meyer, followed by Jackie Echo. Or Echo.
Thanks for your time. My name is John Charles Meyer. I am a Glendale resident and a father of two toddlers, and I am opposed to any expansion of Grayson's gas-generated power. My children attend an all-outdoor preschool, Northeast LA Forest School, which is less than 20 football fields from Grayson. 20 football fields away. It's in Griffith Park, but it's less than 20 football fields away from Grayson. Studies have demonstrated increased risks of hospitalization for asthma, acute respiratory infection, and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease in zip codes containing fuel-fired power plants. My four-year-old son has already been diagnosed with mild asthma as of this past September. Voting to approve the construction of new fossil fuel burning facilities, possibly the last ones in California, in the year 2022 will put you squarely on the wrong side of history. The planet is on fire. The United States is the second-largest emitter of CO2 on the planet. Burning more fossil fuel is not the answer. Respectfully, it doesn't matter what the question is. Burning more gas is not the right answer. Finally, I'm kind of scratching my head a little bit. The disconnect between an apparent budget struggle evidenced by the previous agenda item that I just listened to, in which I have no dog in the fight but I was interested about, and a proposal to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on new infrastructure that will be mothballed in less than two decades per California state law. Climate aside, this sounds like a stupendously bad fiscal decision for the city. But speaking from the heart rather than just from the brain, I am here to say to all five of you, please do not vote to expose my kids to even greater levels of fossil fuel emissions. Thank you.
All right. Jackie Echo, followed by Monica Campagna.
Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. As a longtime Glendale resident with asthma, I ask that you please reject the Grayson expansion project in its current form and tell GWP to further reduce the need for gas generation by prioritizing local distributed solar and storage, energy efficiency, and other ways to reduce and shift energy demand. I also wanted to mention that I also feel very uneasy with the Grayson power plant and the impending possible large earthquakes that we are projected to have within the next 30 years from San Andreas. They're projecting even a magnitude eight. And again, putting gas lines on top of fault lines, especially, you know, with this kind of a risk, is extremely concerning. I would also like to say very briefly that we do need reliable, clean air on a daily basis, and we do have the technology to reach that goal. Thank you.
Okay. Monica Campagna, followed by Owen Lewis.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and Mayor Kasakian. I think this will be my sixth Christmas talking about Grayson repowering and asking our city leaders, know you, to direct our utility to be bold and visionary and to move beyond fossil fuel. Most of you have been on this journey too, and many of you have made crucial votes that have allowed us to explore the potential of other options, and for that, I'm very grateful and I thank you. Because of you and the work of GWP and its consultants, we have multiple opportunities in front of us to explore right now that could be up and running well before new gas equipment. I want GWP to succeed. I ask you again to prioritize clean energy investments over gas investments because we don't have endless amounts of money. We should take this opportunity to build in the ashes of the old Grayson a new decentralized utility model where the energy comes from the sun, is captured in many ways all over the city, stored in devices, large and small, allowing all of us to be part of the solution, residents, the commercial business owners, everyone. And invest this money in clean energy programs now that we will never have to retire, that we can use every day, that can displace more expensive transmission purchases, especially during evening hours, that, once up and running, have no ongoing fuel costs. They don't rely on transmission. They don't rely on fuel. They will help keep us, they will help us keep the lights on through local equipment failures and even earthquakes, and that don't contribute to the climate crisis or pollution. All along the way, the target, that peak load number that has been used to guide us, which is so crucial, it shifted a lot, as you've heard tonight. In the 2019 IRP, it was 347 megawatts. In 2030, it was 347 in 2030. Also, in the 2020 ASCEND report, with projected EV charging integrated. And now, it is 456. That's 38% more than before. And I did also agree about the reach codes. Thank you for passing that. The new Sears building, the new movie studio, they're all going to have to cover a lot of their energy use, and they're all going to have solar on them, so we have to take that into account. Thank you all so much for your consideration on this long journey.
Thank you. And Owen Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, city council members, city staff. Most of you know me as the guy that's always talking about microturbines. I enjoyed talking to some of you at the recent open house, and later on, then I submitted some numbers that I obtained from a local manufacturer of microturbines called Capstone. The bottom line there is that with the new incentives from the Inflation Reduction Act, for $15 million, you can have clean-burning microturbines delivering 9 to 10 megawatts of power 24/7 to your battery electric, a battery storage system at Grayson. This is clean energy. This is best available control technology application, and it is the best technology for landfill gas burning. So, I don't see how you can go forward with the Grayson repowering project approval until you've explored this project, until you have at least looked at how the Inflation Reduction Act affects all your plans. Now, we live near a landfill. We've been fighting this landfill power project for a long time. We've suffered with a landfill. Why do you now want us to suffer with a power plant at a landfill when it's connected to a power plant by a viable and safe pipeline that was built for $14 million in 1978, and it would cost $63 million to build today? So, you want to abandon a $63 million asset and spend $95 million to build a power plant at the landfill? That's before incentives. After incentives, it's somewhere in the $70 million range, but that's a lot more than $15 million. And by the way, the maintenance and operation for that? $1.5 million for 20 years for a scheduled and unscheduled maintenance contract. So, that's 20, that's, that's, well, it's a little more than $15 million over 20 years, but 16.5, $16 million-ish after incentives for guaranteed, continued, reliable, clean, safe, renewable energy delivered to Grayson Power Plant where it can be put to the best use. $15 million. Think it over. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to the callers. Let's go to the first caller. How many callers do we have total now?
We currently have 20 callers.
Okay. So, we're not, I think, about two callers, and we're not going to take any additional callers because I think everyone has had ample time now. Anyone who's sitting, watching, we're at the nine o'clock mark where this is, if everyone takes two minutes, it'll be about another 40 minutes. So, let's go two minutes, and let's try to get through this as efficiently as we can.
Okay. Our first caller is Jackie Gish. Jackie, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and city council members. My name is Jackie Gish, and I am a resident of Glendale. I've been involved with GEC for three years. During that time, GEC has repeatedly called for more local clean energy, but clean energy has not been prioritized by Glendale. Tonight, the choices are clear. Please vote for the fewest number of engines you think that Glendale really needs, preferably zero. As Kate mentioned, Glendale has a large power reserve under normal conditions when all available resources are operating. The projection for required peak power assumes no additional local storage besides the best, and the projection for maximum daily energy assumes minimal new solar by 2027 despite the solar resolution council passed. Please use the money that would have been spent on the engines to invest in solar and storage for the future of our city and our earth. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. Our next caller is Katie Kessler. Katie, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Katie. I live less than a mile from Grayson in the Glenwood neighborhood, where I walk my seven-year-old son to school at Mark Cavill every morning. I'm pretty sure he could power the Americana with the energy he's putting into avoiding bedtime right now. I am a producer for a natural history documentary company, and I am lucky enough to speak regularly to leading climatologists, sedimentologists, conservationists, NASA scientists, and the science leaves no doubt. We are in a genuine climate emergency. It is caused by burning fossil fuels, and we risk losing everything. And the way out is ending our reliance on fossil fuels, and the sooner we do this, the less we lose. And I recognize that we want to avoid brownouts and blackouts during heat waves, but what is causing these record-breaking heat waves? That's right, continued burning of fossil fuels. And I'm sure you know, air quality also worsens with climate change through hotter weather, drought, and wildfires. Do we really need to exacerbate this? I would love to rely on my inhaler left. So, I ask you to please vote for a safer and cleaner future for Glendale and for all of our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Deborah Burchett. Deborah, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and city council members. My name is Deborah Burchett. I have been a resident of Glendale since 1991 and have raised my family here and volunteered in many community programs for decades, and am committed to the quality of life we strive for here in Glendale. As a family that is close to Grayson, we have a serious concern about adding more gas-burning engines to an already polluted location, especially in proximity to the freeways close by. I am very pleased to hear the council is looking towards the future and to solar and energy storage projects, rooftops, city-sided and commercial, for example, and I hope these projects will be given priority to be implemented before resorting to more gas engines. I have been coming to these meetings and voicing my concern for years now, and it seems like the GWP still comes back with the same recommendation, that they need more gas engines. We just can't go backwards. We must move forward without using fossil fuels. And I thank you for all your work on behalf of the city and appreciate your serious consideration of moving to solar renewable energies if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Danielle Limone. Danielle, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi. My name is Danielle Limone, and I'm a resident of Woodbury, and I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Lots of people have given lots of really good examples of the clean energy technology that we have available to us, and the city needs to be prioritizing that rather than a stop-gas measure of relying on gas, which will just continue to contribute to the climate crisis, and that decision is an irreversible decision, the damage that it will do. So, it is both financially irresponsible and morally irresponsible. I encourage you to make the decision. That might be the more difficult decision, but in the long term, it is the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Amy Cos. Amy, you're on air. You have two minutes. Amy Cos. Our next caller is Emily Mirzakhan. Emily, you're on air. You have two minutes. Emily? Okay. Our next caller is Eric Hovland. Eric, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello, Mayor Kasakian and members of city council. Thank you for giving an opportunity to speak on this issue tonight. My name is Eric Hovland. I am a Glendale resident, living in the Rossmooy neighborhood for 19 years. I do not want Glendale to install what may be the last new gas generation plant in California. Let's prioritize and fund clean energy first. Glendale has the opportunity to lead California on developing green energy. Please be more aggressive installing solar on city property and helping residents and businesses install solar. It has been nine years since I have installed solar on my home and very few neighbors have followed. As a result, Glendale is well below the California install base. Let's turn this around instead of investing in generators that we will quickly obsolete. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Melanie Mirzakhan. Melanie, you're on air. You have two minutes. Melanie? Our next caller is Vicki Kaplan. Vicki, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicki Kaplan. I live in the Rossmooy neighborhood. 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 I live in the Rossmooy neighborhood.
Our next caller is Melanie Mierzachan. Melanie, you're on air. You have two minutes. Melanie? Our next caller is Vicki Kaplan. Vicki, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicki Kaplan. I live in the Rossmoyn neighborhood. I am a mother of a four-year-old. She and any of us here also who have kids or small people in our lives, they're all going to outlive us and outlive the decisions that are being made here tonight. When I moved my family to Glendale about two or three years ago, a selling point for me actually was that I had read about the movement in Glendale towards clean energy, and I was really proud of the city that I was moving to, that there was a democratic movement with people elected to city council for the purpose of pursuing the available clean energy options, which have only increased in the last three years. Having participated in a couple of elections since then, it's been clear to me that the people have spoken and have elected council members on a platform of renewable energy, not dirty energy. I think you hear that reflected tonight. It's not just us, the voters of Glendale, saying that. We've got the California Air Resources Board saying no more gas in the state of California. We've got the federal government, a policy that I helped work on over the last few years, the Inflation Reduction Act, the federal government saying, "We have money available to you to cities around and states around the country to invest in renewable energy. We want to help you get there." So right now, I see like a big arrow of the state of California moving forward, the United States moving forward, and our beautiful little city of Glendale moving in the other direction. We can turn that arrow around tonight with all of the ways that people tonight have shared. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Patrick Dinen. Patrick, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. Yes, this is Patrick Dinen. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff. I'm a Glendale resident living in Adamsville. I'm also a local business owner and father of two young kids. I wanted to say that we are currently witnessing exponential and disruptive growth in clean energy that will continue to make fossil fuels obsolete over the next decade. I urge you to approve the least number of gas engines possible so we don't waste tens of millions of dollars on overly expensive insurance policy that will ultimately be a tax on GWP customers. Let's be honest here, GWP's incentives simply aren't aligned with the residents who are passive customers. Please don't let fear drive your decisions tonight, and thank you for your consideration. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Our next caller is Courtney Smith. Courtney, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, council members and city staff. My name is Courtney Smith. I'm a Glendale resident. First of all, I want to say I agree with Kate Under's analysis and research. Now I'm calling to encourage and request the city council reject the proposal for five gas engines to power Grayson in favor of clean and green energy solutions. A decision for five, or frankly, any gas engine will be backwards and negate Glendale's claim that we are a leader in green solutions. I want to be able to proudly state that Glendale, like many other cities in California, is utilizing as many clean energy resources as possible. Unfortunately, this item tells me that Glendale stands to the opposite. Remember, any title is dependent on your actions. To approve any gas engines is to make legislative decisions that go against green leadership, and it's a travesty because the planet is quickly falling victim to human and fossil fuel caused climate change. Sea levels are rising, temperatures are rising, fires and other unnatural climate change-induced disasters are exponentially rising. In order to accomplish our green energy goals, Glendale has to turn the tide of our carbon footprint, full stop. I'm a concerned citizen who knows climate change is real, we are losing time, and we need to take all renewable options seriously as we eliminate fossil fuels. Also, from a political and economic standpoint, renewable energy is popular, accessible, and in spite of GWP's fear mongering, we'll support Glendale's energy. And right now, we have to move forward with other options. I'm disappointed, other Glendale residents are disappointed, and the threat of this decision is one being made by many towns and cities around the country and the world that will make this planet unlivable. We are one in a series of towns and cities making these crucial decisions. Let's get this right. Glendale should not install what may be the last new gas generation plant in California. Let's prioritize and fund clean energy first. We have so many promising clean energy sources now on the horizon. We need to fund these first before we install polluting gas generation equipment for all of us here tonight and for all of the people who we don't even know yet, whose quality of life is dependent on our actions and decisions today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Nat Yance. Nat, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi there. Thanks for taking my call again. From a global standpoint, it's 70-plus degrees in December, and that's because of fossil fuels. Dozens of species are dying every day, and that's because of fossil fuels. You know, our oceans are becoming acid, and that's because of fossil fuels. We can't rely on fossil fuels to get us out of the problem that fossil fuels are causing. And from a local politics standpoint, the only reason that this decision isn't more unpopular than it already is is that relatively few people even know what's happening here tonight. Thank you. Please vote for as few possible new engines as possible. We're talking zero here. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next caller is Bert Culver. Bert, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. First question, why is there no phone number on YouTube anymore? That happened a few months ago. I'm reading a book. It's called What We Owe the Future. It's about the idea that we are living in a pivotal moment in human history. choices we make today will have a significant impact on the future of billions and billions of future people. Carbon dioxide emitted today will affect the atmosphere for 50 to 100 years. Even if we stop producing CO2 today, we will still face increasing heat, drought, and weather instability for decades. The decisions you make tonight could affect human life for 100 years. Voting against locking in dirty energy in Glendale will be part of tipping the balance in favor of the human race and all life on future Earth. I live in Glendale, and I want clean, reliable energy for Glendale. I want to finally close the door on new fossil fuel at Grayson so we can move on to focusing on our clean energy future. We can do this. We can do this for our children's children and their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jack Walworth. Jack, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello, city council and Mayor Kasakian. Thank you very much for taking my call. I just wanted to say what everybody else is saying here. We need to move forward into the future with clean energy and demand response. The tide is turning. It has turned. It's time to look at what's in front of us, what's possible, what we see in the EcoMotion Report, what Kate and others have said earlier. We can do this without these gas plants, without any engines at all, or at the very least, you know, as few as possible. So please, look into the future here. Limit our gas production locally and do our part to save humans on this planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Karen Katsler. Karen, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for taking my call. First of all, I wanted to say happy holidays and thanks to the fossil fuels and the people that put up all this equipment. We enjoy a level of luxury that no other generation had had before us, and it's now time we can take it from here. So thank you and goodbye. And I want to go for solar, wind, wave energy, whatever can be developed in the near future. And we need to do it now because now we are already at 440 parts per million today. That was slated to be happening in about 11 years, but we are already there. So my question is, what makes us human? And the difference between humans to any other primates and animals is that we have an extra part of our brain, and that's the so-called thinking brain, the prefrontal cortex. And that means we can use this brain and care for future generations and with empathy and compassion. We have to reduce our consumption of all fossil fuels, change the way we live, and think about the future generations. And yeah, so I am hopeful that you will make the right decision and vote no on Grayson altogether and look forward to the money that's coming from the federal government and then companies like Sunrun and other solar companies. They lease the equipment with the funds from the federal government, and it reduces the current electrical bill even further when they have leased solar on their roofs. So there are so many options, and I look forward to hearing which one you will choose. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Our next caller is Erin Dinen. Erin, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, council members and city staff. My name is Erin Dinen. I am an Attle resident, and I'm a concerned mother of two girls. Thank you for your commitment to serving our community. I know we all agree that the right decision for our community is clean, and thank you for the city's resolution and commitment to that clean energy, which is aligned with the federal progress we've made this year. But the bottom line is, our planet and every species on it are in danger now, not in the future, and we know better now. Our children deserve better now, and you have the power to do something now. Please show us your willingness to be the innovative leaders that we elected. We're all here tonight to ask you, please prevent new gas engines at Grayson and invest the funds to implement clean energy solutions now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Amy Cos. Amy, you're on air. You have two minutes. Amy Cos. Our next caller is Emily Mierzachan. Emily, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, this is Emily. I'm the president of the Glendale Community College Students for Sustainability Club, and I believe that we need to prioritize clean energy in Glendale. This past summer, the heat wave showed that Glendale residents and businesses can step up and reduce demand dramatically. Why are we installing expensive new gas generation backup power when there are better, cleaner solutions for peak use periods? We must transform our energy systems to make them non-carbon emitting, sustainable, resilient, and compatible with the environment. A contract for gas engines now would set Glendale back in achieving its clean energy goals. I know we can do better to be more sustainable. Thank you so much for your time and happy holidays.
Thank you. Our next caller is Melanie Mierzachan. Melanie, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Our next caller is Rachel Pringle. Rachel, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, I've been a resident of Glendale for almost all of my life. I was raised here, and after college, I came back. Most of the callers have been saying the same thing, and I'm just adding that, adding to the same message that I'd like you to please consider our future in deciding how many gas power plants you want to fund, hopefully zero. When I was in Glendale as a student, I learned about climate change. I've now been a teacher for 12 years, and the students keep learning about climate change, except every year, the lesson gets more and more dire. I'm not even a science teacher. I'm an English teacher, but I can tell you from reading student essays and college applications, they're worried, they're concerned, they're scared, and it's up to us as adults to choose a better future for them. Please keep in mind your vote tonight is going to affect many, many people for years and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Leah Caprera. Leah, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Kasakian, council members and city staff. I am a Glendale resident for 12 years, and I used to be a biology researcher in air pollution and marine pollution, and now I work with clean energy equipment because I really believe in on it, and I think we have so many promising clean energy sources now on the horizon, and we need to fund this first before we install polluting gas generation equipment. Glendale should not install what may be the last new gas generation plant in California. Really, we have to prioritize and fund clean energy first. People already told very well about all the consequences of fossil fuels, energy for the living being and for the climate change. So we really need to refuse fossil fuels, and gas, of course, is one of them, and prioritize clean energy. Thank you so much for your attention and happy holidays.
Thank you. Our next caller is Brian Ellen. Brian, you are on air. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Brian Ellis. I'm a 40-year resident of Glendale, and I'm calling tonight to represent the violent majority of Glendale, who have no idea you are introducing not just knowing the five generators that will be my lights on in the future, regardless of the emotional appeal that my opponent tonight is the professional at GWP and your government has shown you a clear map to maintain our electric reliability and keep the lights on, and I support my broad religion. Thank you very much, and have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Samantha Ibrahimee. Samantha, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of the city council and city. My name is Samantha Ibrahimee, a 29-year Quetzal resident, and I'm here to say that enough is enough, and it's time to approve this project and forward. We need these workers and cannot be a reliable utility without them. I work from home and run a business from my home, and I rely on power steadily every single day, especially during the summer. I don't want to worry about rolling blackouts, one hour on, one hour off, just because our grid is incapable of reliability. Solar is simply not enough. GWP staff has proposed yet another plan that should be approved this evening, but to prove this plan and stop wasting and move forward, work towards reliability. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Greg Astorian. Greg, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian. My name is Greg Astorian, and I'm calling on behalf of Glendale Association of Realtors with 1,700-plus members. We have made this call before in support of Alternative 7. While we're not experts, whether it's three-Warsila engines or five-Warsila engines, and we don't pretend to be one, we do know that affordability, sustainability, and reliability go hand in hand, and I believe our goal is the same like yours to get us close to 100% renewables, but we do know that right now, even if you were to use the Warsila engines, they will be at around 14% or 15% of the usage throughout the year, meaning that 86% of the time, you will be using other sources for generating electricity. With that in mind, we encourage you to go forward and approve the contracts, amendments, and the procurement actions to move forward so we won't have to face another cost increase on the material and the labor and the procurement of the engines and the mechanizations of Grayson. Thank you for listening to me and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Our next caller is Edwin. Edwin, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, council members. I'm calling today to say that I do support the Grayson repowering. Now, here's the thing. Every single caller that I've heard talks about clean energy. They want solar, and they're trying to talk about fighting climate change, but you know what they'll talk about? They'll talk about how countries like India and China are the largest polluter when it comes to manufacturing. The power plant is a very, very tiny problem, and everybody thinks that the power plant is going to contribute to climate change. That's a very, very tiny problem, and unfortunately, that is not true. A lot of people think that going green with solar panels and all that green energy stuff, that's not enough. A lot of those people don't think logically when it comes to energy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And next is Amy Cos. Amy, you're on air. You have Thank you. And next is Amy Cost. Amy, you're on air. You have two minutes. This is my final call for Amy. Are you there? Okay, I am dropping this call, and I have one more. Melanie Mizrahan, Melanie, you're on air. You have two minutes. Are you there?
I think you already got her. That's the genius.
It was a different person, but, okay. I think we're done.
Okay, let's all take a deep breath, maybe stretch a little bit in our seats, and then get started. Who would like to, thank you everyone who came, has sat through this, especially the folks who are waiting for the next item. It is the last meeting of the year. We're going out with a bang. Who would like to go first in terms of questions or comments?
I have questions.
Then you have the floor, council member. Najarian, go ahead.
Mark or Scott, you were talking about a limited use restriction on the Wartzilla engines if they were to be installed, a limited number of starts and stops, or limited hours. Can you briefly, briefly just explain, I mean, like, give me two sentences, max?
Mayor Kasakian, fellow council members, council member Najarian, sentences?
Forget the formalities, okay? At this point, forget the formalities. Just get right to it.
Yes, it's akin to about 14% capacity factor. You have limited hours of use over the course of days and months, and limited usage over years. So yes, 14% capacity factor is the answer.
Okay. We have to, we have to give a report to the California Energy Commission that shows that we can meet our energy demands.
Yes.
Correct. What happens if we give them this report that shows we're minus 40 or whatever?
First, they will ask us why we sent it to them, because it's an incomplete plan. We haven't been able to meet what our particular loads are. Second thing is, we will probably be discussing our concerns with our balancing authority, and the CEC will be asking the balancing authority, why do you have an LSE that can't provide? So it'll escalate from there. But our inability to provide means we may not be able to qualify as a load-serving entity.
Recently in the news, I don't know if you, have you heard, what I have heard, that recently, an organization called the Orange County Power Authority was unable to meet the requirements when they reported to the CEC, and that they've taken steps to disband, which is essentially a green power authority. It's power that they're selling to residents of Orange County that's totally sustainable. They couldn't meet that power, I guess, requirement.
Right.
Did you hear, or did I miss hear, that they are taking steps to disband that entire authority because it's not a responsible organization meeting the power demands of the users?
I'm not as familiar with all the details, but I had heard that as a secondary source. I had heard it from somebody else about it, yes.
Okay. Is, is Los Angeles revamping their scattergood power plant?
Yes, yes. LA just recently, City Council just recently approved a methodology for procurement, which is a step in the process to buy or build those natural gas-powered plants. So they are, that's just one step closer to the process of assigning an EPC and actually installing units.
And are they doing that to meet their power needs?
Absolutely. They're in base, and so LA has very significant issues with transmission and being able to move energy around. Those problems that they have are our problems also. So they have an in-base issue of getting generation to where load is. So they really need scattergood to be repowered, so they can supply energy in that area.
And did the state issue temporary operating permits to five other gas plants?
Yes.
In the state?
Yes. California Department of Water Resources last year was able to buy and install, well, they bought five LM 2500s, about 30 megawatt units, and I believe they had at least three installed, but they probably have all five installed now.
And is there consideration to extend the lifespan on Diablo Canyon Nuclear Plant?
Absolutely.
And is the reason for all that to meet the power's demand for the state of California?
That is a resounding yes.
Okay, that, those are my questions.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Council member?
One question. I'll have comments later, but I just have one question. Kate Unger mentioned the filing to the CEC that we indicated that our peak load forecast for 2027 was 337 megawatts in a, in a recent filing. What can you tell me about that?
Specifically, I couldn't tell you about that, but we do, we do provide a load forecast to the CEC. That's part of the IRP process. The IRP process also says that every five years, you have to update your IRP, or whenever there's a substantial change in your portfolio, and this would constitute a substantial change in the portfolio, as would be building electrification or the mandate to go to 5 million cars, electric vehicles on the road by 2035?
2030.
2030. CEC has a calculator that actually calculates how many cars, electric cars, is Glendale's share, and that's about 50,000 cars. And that 50,000 cars would increase megawatt-hours by about 170,000 megawatt-hours. So it's fair to say that our load will go up. And as soon as this, as soon as we figure out the solution to Shoal Canyon and Grayson, we will be initiating a new IRP to submit to the California Energy Commission.
Okay, so you don't know about that 337?
Specifically, I couldn't.
Number. Mr. Mayor, could I ask Kate to come up and just?
Sure.
Tell us that, if she's still here?
You may ask clarifying questions, certainly.
I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but you mentioned it in your comments.
Yeah, the specific question is, what was the filing?
Yeah, can you just elaborate? What exactly was it? When was it?
It was, it was in November. I'm not sure I can pull the exact date off the top of my head, but...
November of this year?
Yeah, it was just the other day. I found it on the, on the docket for the Integrated Energy Resource Plan docket, and it showed the actual peak demand for 2020, 2021, and 22, and showed a forecast for 2023 through 2031.
And the 2027 number again was?
330.
330.
That's consistent. Without redoing the Integrated Resource Plan on a yearly basis, we use the historic Integrated Resource Plan, but I do say that on September 6, we had a 331-megawatt peak.
Right, right.
And we locally generated 87 megawatts, and we were megawatts away from having to go into blackouts.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, that for 2022 was 331. 2027 is what I thought you asked me for. I gave 330 for 2027.
Right. Basically, we were showing it flat.
Yeah, actually, higher for 2023 through 2024. 336, 336, 334, 334, and then 330 in 2027.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman Brahman.
In real time, I got a text that the LA City Council did not approve scattergood and pulled it off their agenda today.
Well, they deleted it, yeah. Today, today.
Well, they had protests today. I think there were other things. They had Kevin De Leon in the house.
It's not a done deal. Certainly something LADWP is saying they believe they need, but it's certainly not a done deal.
Let's hear from our other colleagues. Council member Devine?
Yeah. Owen, and I'm sorry, I don't have his last name, mentioned microturbines, and he said it's the best technology. How do you respond to that?
So we looked at micro, I mean, I believe it's a different project. The gentleman was talking about Shoal Canyon, not Grayson?
Oh, oh, okay. And gas turbines, the, we're not using those either.
So the difference between reciprocating engines and gas turbines? So gas turbine is basically a jet engine that you would see on a, on a, on a plane. It's in a stationary housing, and it spins at an extremely fast RPM, and that creates electricity by compressing and exploding natural gas in the, in the turbine. Minimum generation on a turbine is about 50% load. So we have, we have gas turbines at, at Grayson, and our newest unit, number nine unit, is an LM 6000, which is a gas turbine. So rounding numbers, because a lot of times I get beat up on, on being off for a megawatt or two, but generally speaking, it's a 50-megawatt unit, and minimum generation is 25. So if I turn that unit on, minimum generation is 25, and I can operate from 25 to 50. With a reciprocating engine, you can operate in smaller increments. So for our position, we have an 18-megawatt unit. We can operate at a minimum of nine, and you can go up to 18. The beautiful, beautiful thing about these reciprocating engines is, when you don't need the engine, you could turn it off. With the gas turbine, you can't turn it off after, you can turn it off after a certain amount of time. Or more importantly, you can't turn it back on after a certain amount of time. With these Wartzillas, you can start and stop them when you need them, and you can go ahead and restart them. I think of it as a new car that turns itself off during the red light. We can do that with a reciprocating engine. This is a perfect opportunity for us to be able to utilize this engine for the variability of solar and any of the wind that we get in our system, because remember, the generation and the load have to match all the time. It's not like I can overproduce during the day and pay it back later. It has to produce every, every cycle, and there's 60 cycles in a second. So that's what we have to do.
There has to be a balance.
Right. And, and these are flexible. They're, they're very popular in supporting renewable energy.
I read a, an article, Tucson, as well as Portland, and some cities in Texas also, but in Tucson, they have 10 Wartzillas, and they say that it improved efficiency by 40%. Would that be true?
It depends on what they replaced. So our units, our boilers, are about a 14-heat rate, and these, these reciprocating engines work about, in a conservative way, about 7,000, so it could be 50% reduction. It's much, much more efficient.
Okay. And they also mentioned that lower emissions, it reduces nitrogen oxide emissions by 60%. True or false?
And again, it would be what they replace, but it's the best available technology, and it's widely used as, as a complement to the renewable energy portfolio.
And water savings?
It is a closed system, so we don't use any water, other than potable water, where somebody would have to go to the bathroom or wash their hands. But as far as making electricity, it's a closed system. It's like a radiator in your car.
And the other thing, and I just want to mention this, that I just found this so interesting. They did their project, 10 Wartzillas, when we started talking about this, and they got 10 Wartzilla engines for $160 million. And now look where we are, at three or five. Just a comment. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay.
Sure. The eight megawatt and 10 megawatts you have for the Sears and movie studio projects, does that include our recent resolutions for incorporating solar into new buildings and all that?
So when we looked at building electrification, we found it very difficult to try to quantify because it's new buildings, and how much, how much solar are you going to get from it? But we have to remember, on a utility scale, it takes anywhere between three to five acres to get one megawatt. Some people can argue that there's a more efficient acreage, that it might be two, but I think that's when you have 200 megawatts of, of solar, not when you're trying to put it strategically around places on a roof. So the event that we're going to charge cars and be able to be net exporters on a building is, that's pie in the sky. That's not going to happen. There's not enough electricity to charge the cars that are going to be in, in residential buildings. Maybe, maybe your house, but I don't even think if you have one or two, if you have two cars, definitely not.
And then, you know, we spoke about this at the staff briefing, but I think it would be worthwhile for our residents to hear. The chart that you have for the capacity, can you walk us through how you came to that number and why you had to add all of those things that others may feel like is redundant or not needed? It's kind of like stacked. You're creating like the worst-case scenario of all, worst-case scenarios?
So let me, you find the capacity.
Five.
So on, on capacity, when you, when we look at, when you look at capacity, this is best-case scenario. If we look at the Pacific DC line or the Southwest AC lines, there, whatever that number is as a rated transmission capacity, when we need to have the energy on those transmission lines, there's thermal ratings on those transmission lines. So when it's hot, when we, i.e. when we really need the energy, those lines are never at capacity. So when we look at these capacities, we're looking at best-case scenario. And when we also look at dispatching, say, a battery, if we look, as a, as a, as a energy trader or a power dispatcher, what, you don't know what's going to happen on the next hour. You just have a feeling of what's going to happen on the next hour. So if I have, say, 100 megawatts of the battery, and I have eight hours of day left, and I need to strategically utilize that 100 megawatts, I have to figure out at what hour am I going to put those megawatts in, looking at 15-minute increments going forward. If I look backwards, it's a lot easier to fill in underneath the barcode and put it all in, and we were perfect. That's not how dispatchers and traders ever, ever operate, because they don't know. They don't want to have, at the end of hour 23, or the end of hour 22, they didn't want, they don't want to have no resources left. So what we have to do is strategically put it in the best way we know how. So fully optimizing all of your resources all the time is not realistic. And the D rates of the transmission lines cause the capacities of the lines to go down, and it all depends on how much energy is flowing, how much heat is being dissipated out of that transmission line. So this is all best-case scenario. Did I, I'm sorry, I was rambling on. Did I answer your question?
You, so I think you answered part of that. I think you had also mentioned that there's a requirement that comes from the state, where you actually have to create the worst-case scenario, because I was kind of walking through, well, why isn't our solar included? Why isn't our eco-motion report included and all of that, right? And so I think that would be worthwhile to, to note as well.
That's great. So if we had mandatory demand response, where the dispatcher can be in trouble and needs to have a certain amount of energy in the demand response, so say if we have a demand response program that had 20 megawatts of demand response, and the dispatcher can press a button, and that 20 megawatts comes off the grid, then we can count it as a load reduction. Presently, we have a demand response program, but conveniently, during our heat wave, people opted out of it, and we never got anywhere near our capacity. So the CEC says, you can't count on that, which makes it even worse, because we have the program, and if we can't count on it, we have to be the supplier of last resort. So even though sometimes, in that 20-megawatt example, we'll get a 20-megawatt reduction, if I can't press a button and remove that off the grid, then I can't count it, and I have to then keep it in the portfolio as a potential load.
So I'll say this, I, I understand why you needed to include that in the report the way that you have, because that's how you have to report it to the state. What I would have loved to see, and, and, because you prepared this report for us, and for us to be able to make a decision today, what I would have loved to see from you today was that you incorporated all of those things that we've talked about, and the recent things that the council passed as part of this consideration, regardless of the fact whether or not that's being reported to the state. or not that's being reported to the state, in order for, at least for me, to be able to have footing on, like, and have in the same document, a bird's-eye view of, you know, here, here's how each of the pieces, you know, come together to make the puzzle for our utility.
I understand and I think we weren't very good at explaining the local DER in this peak load scenario. We don't have those numbers. We're striving to get those numbers based on your guidance. So we're looking at city-owned sites to put solar on, expanding the DER programs under your direction. These numbers are goals and reach goals for us to be able to achieve in order for us to be able to come up with a resource stack.
Mr. Young, on the next table, peak load scenario, you do show a local new DER, right?
Slide five, is that your time? Yes.
Slide five.
Yes, because we're anticipating being able to get those megawatts. Presently, we're talking kilowatts. With EE, we're getting some EE, but the DR is embarrassing. I mean, and they're opting out, right? So if it was mandatory, we'd be able to count on it. But we're anticipating counting on it to develop the program, to figure out new, better ways for us to be able to get that DER number up to these expected numbers.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? I don't have any questions. I've asked many of my questions and I think some of my colleagues also asked the same questions I would have asked. Who wants to go first in terms of their comments?
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
Okay.
By all means.
So for everybody out there and everybody that's watching, I hope you understand that I am as deeply concerned about the climate crisis as anyone. It's the primary thing that motivates me to do this work. So, and--
Councilmember Brotman, can I just interject? I want to ask, I want to get clarification on a few things now, though. I don't want to do it during my comments, I just want to get it out right now. So just so I understand, when did our neighboring cities replace their engines in their power plants? I know there's Magnolia in Burbank and then there's Glenarm in Pasadena, correct?
That's correct. There was Glenarm 5 and that was done four or five years ago and that was, that was a new generator that was combined cycle. And they had Glenarm 1 and Glenarm 2, which is an old, simple-cycle unit that's similar to 8A, but in a simple-cycle mode. And they refurbished those last year.
Okay.
Burbank hasn't had a new generator since 2005 and that was Magnolia. But Magnolia is way more than Burbank's load.
Okay. And when was the last time any of ours were replaced or refurbished?
We had, we had number nine that was, that replaced number six and number seven in 2003. And before that, eight units were 1977 as an expansion. And I'd like, I just want to make sure that this is not an expansion to the Grayson Power Facility. This is, this is an extreme reduction from 234 megawatts of thermal generation down to the proposed 93.
I understand, but I think that, you know, also the public and the narrative that has happened before and kind of the discussions that have happened in this chamber, we've gotten to where we are from where we were before, because there was a very robust push for more before. In terms of carbon footprint, what percentage of our portfolio is from coal versus, let's say, Pasadena's? I think Pasadena has 47% coal, if I'm not mistaken. I'm trying to pull back the numbers from previous presentations.
So in 2021, Pasadena's coal was 47.6%.
47.6% from coal.
Correct. And Glendale's was 3.5. And if we just read a little further on the power content label, 35% of the energy is renewable on our portfolio.
How are we getting those numbers? I just don't want anyone to think that we pulled those numbers from, you know, thin air or that we're putting out fake news, whatever it may be. I mean, how do we get the fact that they're--
That's a very good question. The California Energy Commission requires us to have an independent auditor, look at all of, every megawatt that was sold and purchased by Glendale on an hourly basis. And it was, then they come up with these numbers and we get verified. Once it's verified, then we post it.
Okay. I don't have any questions at the time. I just need, I know those numbers, I just wanted to get clarification for it. I'm sorry, Councilmember Brotman, I just had to get answers out.
Anyway, the point I was making is that the position I'm going to take tonight is based on, you know, my judgment of what is best for our decarbonization plan, which is our energy system and everything else that we want to decarbonize. And I have thought about this for a long time. I was on that side starting in 2017. It's been five years, more than five years, thinking about and studying this problem. So where I am on this is, I really think that load growth numbers that GWP is presenting are over the top. I think, you know, we look at, the peak was in 2017, it's been pretty flat since then. There will be additional demand from EVs and from buildings that they will grow, so there will be some increase in load, but not nearly as fast as suggested. And the peaks really can be managed in a way that these numbers do not take into account with things like time of use rates and other programs that we talked about, dynamic pricing and demand response. We talked about them when Ted Flanagan was here. So really, I think, from a planning point of view, we really should be going to the 2019 IRP model assumptions, which really are more than adequate. And that is a peak of 398 megawatts, which is already, I think, with a P95, which is a 1 in 20 chance. And the typical kind of CEC approach is a 1 in 10. So we're already being pretty conservative in saying we're going to use a P95, a 1 in 20 number. And I think that's probably right, actually, to use a 1 in 20, because 1 in 10 doesn't really work anymore because of how hot it's gotten, right? We have these 1 in 10 events, like a couple of years in a row, 1 in 10 is no longer the number, right? It's probably 1 in 20. So I think, I think that number's reasonable. It's a significant growth from where we are now. But anyway, that's where I would be. Now, if that's kind of a reasonable place to be planning, I think, you know, we saw from Mr. Webb's analysis and other places, the three Wartzillas pretty much get us there, get us close. At the same time, I think when we look at our resources, you've put in 25 megawatts of DERs by 2027. I think that's really, that would really be a failure for us to only get 25 by 2027. We can certainly get more than that. And I think 50 megawatts by 2027 is almost like a bottom line. And, and, and we've got to do it. We've got to be committed as a council to do things differently so that happens. So if I look at that, if I take that 2019 IRP peak and I look at, let's say, 50 megawatts instead of 25 megawatts, it works. Three Wartzillas does the trick. And, you know, if we, if we had more time to develop more DERs, if we had more time to put in more batteries, I would say we could even go below three. But right now, I think three is more than enough. It's the most I would be comfortable ever approving. You know, could we go for no new gas? I really had hoped that that would be the case and it pains me to have to be, you know, participating in a vote to purchase new gas engines. And I don't know, I might have even been the one that came up with the last gas argument, but here I am. I just don't think, honestly, to everybody out there, I don't think zero Wartzilla engines works. I just don't think it works. It doesn't get us to where we need to go. And the other thing is, these are really going to be limited. And I do want to get to kind of conditions for approval that have to do with how we use these engines, but these are really going to be for reserves and for extreme heat days. They're not going to be used very much. And so I look at it really as not an environmental question as much as a financial question and a question of risk, a question of insurance. How much do we want to pay for those reserves and for that added insurance? So that's where I am. And I think, you know, we have to think about the long game. The long game is getting off fossil fuels entirely by 2035, pushing building and vehicle electrification, which we're doing. And I, I think if we fall short of power, I'm afraid it just undermines the credibility of the whole plan. And I don't want to let that happen. So that's where I am. I think, you know, three Wartzillas is more than enough. I think it gives us a safe margin to operate. I think there is going to be pressure on GWP now to develop more DERs faster, but I think we're behind that and we have to make it happen. And, and I do want to talk about how these engines are used. So part of this is, I really want kind of three things as conditions for approval. One of them is kind of what's, I guess what's called a stacking order, is that what you call it? Or, which is kind of what resources you use first? And, and without getting into a whole lot of detail, we obviously want to be using our clean energy resources first, our clean imports, right? And our fossil last. And, and how you, how you stack, you know, a Unit 9 or a Magnolia versus the Wartzillas, I don't know. You know, leave that to you, but our fossil assets have to be the absolute last thing. The other thing, and we've talked about this before, is that these should not be used for economic opportunity. We should not be looking and into the market and seeing that we are so-called in the money and we can sell this power out at a higher price than it costs us to generate it and we can earn some revenue. I know that's very tempting. I know that, you know, that can help keep rates down, but I think that when we think about using this, it should be environmental considerations. We should not be selling power into the market, unless we're called upon by the balancing authority, by the, you know, by the state, by CEC. If there's an emergency, absolutely, if we have to do it by law or as part of our obligations, yeah. But I don't think we should do it otherwise. And then the third part of the conditions of approval should be regular reporting, I don't know if that's monthly or quarterly, let's, let's talk about what's operationally possible, but regular reporting so that we in the public knows when these have been used, how long they've been used for, all our fossil assets. Because people have a deep concern about us using these things and we're saying here, we're going to use them infrequently and we need to make sure that that is completely transparent to the public. So basically, that sums up where I am.
Councilmember Najarian?
I, I want to say that I agree 100% with the analysis of Mr. Brotman. However, I do not agree with the factual premise on our load issues. I am not an energy expert. Ascend Analytics is an energy expert. When they say that the new model of load is at 456 megawatts, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what I can justify disagreeing with them for. We know that the vehicle electrification is increasing at a, I don't want to say geometrical rate, but a very high rate. We're building thousands and bringing in thousands of new residents into Glendale. You know, just look back to one of our previous meetings, the Sears, the Sears property, almost 700 new units with probably 2,000 new residents at least, all electric. The city alone is doing 500 units of affordable housing, another 1,000 residents, let's say, all electric. The state mandate for electric vehicles, the, our transition to battery electric buses, which suck a lot of power. The potential for the North Hollywood to Pasadena BRT, a bus rapid transit coming through Glendale, depending on the charging methods that they use, could be sucking a lot of power. I had never heard about the sound studios sucking 10 megawatts? I mean, that's a lot of power that's coming in there. So I don't have, I don't have the background to legitimately challenge someone like Ascend Analytics. Do I wish that they're wrong? Of course I wish that they're wrong. Do I wish it was an overstatement? Of course I do. But I have nothing to, to go on. None of the speakers or anyone that has come forward has really challenged that, except talking about our reference to our own filings from our 2019, which shows a rather flat growth. We know it's not going to be flat. I can tell you that. Ecomotion, everyone's talking about Ecomotion, Ecomotion. Well, the president of Ecomotion sat on the GWP commission and urged his other colleagues to vote for five Wartzilla engines. This is Mr. Ecomotion, five Wartzilla engines. And it was a unanimous vote. So that tells me, Mr. Ecomotion, Mr. Ted Flanagan, who is, you know, by no means a denialist, environmental denialist, believes that we need the five engines. So, you know, based on all that, I'm going to use Mr. Brotman's analysis, but my target is what we're seeing from Ascend Analytics. Instead of the 398 peak, we're at 456. The N minus one, N minus one, minus one puts us at, puts us at 620 megawatts. And I think we need five engines to cover that and we may even be short. And I think we are short in the stoic, stoicometric, that's, that's my chemistry, stochastic analysis, even then shows us short at 450 with the five engines. We're not going to go to six. Six is, is out of the ballgame. We, in good faith, and although it cost us tens of millions of dollars to delay this decision from back in March, or whenever it was, I agreed that the best path was to make sure that we uncovered every stone, looked at every other energy source. LADWP hung up on us on a Zoom call, basically. Well, not exactly, but they said, we can't give you any power. The DER fell flat on its face, flat. The demand response was so bad that the California Energy Commission said, no, 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 don't you ever count that again, because nobody took, took advantage of it. It got real hot, they said, well, you know, that promise we made to you to turn our thermostats down, deal's off. It's too hot, we need to cool down. So this is the reality. Can that change? It can, maybe it'll change, but it's going to take an incredible amount of work. And, and we have included, in our best-case scenario, 50 megawatts of the local DER. And still, we're, we're cutting it short. So I think we need five and, Glendale is different than any other city. We are an island. We just can't bring in the electricity from the clean sources that other locale can. We can't just tap into Southern California Edison's green pipeline and take that. How did Pasadena get away with what they did? I miss the outrage on that, because Glendale has been doing a darn good job. You know, the Verdugo Sierra Club? Get on them for a while, because that's a disgrace at 47% coal, an absolute disgrace. We're busting our ch- We're busting our chops here, trying to get down to 6% or whatever and keep the, and do what we can just to keep the lights on. It's a very difficult choice that we have. We're constrained, and you've heard this before, we're constrained in our transmission. We're, we're burdened by this N minus one, minus one requirement by the CEC. But I really think we need five to keep the lights on and stop by any rolling blackouts. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Sure. Tell us more about that.
Okay. I've tried to keep this brief as well. And you'll have to forgive me if I'm redundant. It's almost as if we're all, we're, the three are on the same wavelength as far as what we have to say. I look at this as a three-pronged decision. One is environmental, one is economic affordability, and the other is reliability. I heard one of the, a couple of the callers mentioned that this is a quality of life issue, that we can't possibly do this gas, this power plant, it's a quality of life issue. Not having power is a quality of life issue. Not having your lights, not having your computer, not having your medical equipment, not having your air conditioning or your heater, that, those are quality of life issues. We recently, I recently went through an 18-hour electrical power shut-off at my house, my neighborhood, just my neighborhood, 18 hours. And I have to tell you, it was not enjoyable. And it was my quality of life that was, that was impacted. So I want to thank staff for going through this time and time and time again, not only days, weeks, months, years, just kind of trying to hone in on the, the best, the best project, the best answer to our, our questions on sustainability and providing power. But as a policymaker and a representative of the entire city, and I, I compliment Brian Ellis on that silent majority that spoke up, I have to look at the reality of this, this issue. Yes, we're in the midst of a climate crisis. Yes, we have, we have to do everything we can to provide clean, green, reliable, renewable energy to our, our, our city. It's getting hotter in the summers, we've experienced that. The winters are changing, we've experienced that. But like Councilmember Najarian said, we are an island with a limit to our transmission, importing electricity and power. So we have to, we have to rely on our local resources. And Grayson is one of those resources. Yes, we're moving towards electrification. That's another issue that, we have to consider that. Everything is going to be electrified. Our homes, multifamily developments, cars, buses, trains, bicycles, Mr. Brotman, Councilmember Brotman, bicycles, everything is, is elect, going towards electrification. So with our inability to bring in renewables and still provide that reliable, affordable, and clean energy to meet the demand, what do we do? What do we do? Now, many have told me that we're lucky here in Glendale. We're very lucky, because we have a power plant and we have a landfill, two resources that can supply the power that, that we need in our community to get through until we can get to the renewables, 100%. Last week after the EcoMotion, that terrific EcoMotion, and I'm sorry, mentioning that again, gave us so many great ideas and suggestions to generate solar power, a gentleman stood up. And I, I remember this because it just, I thought, that's, he's spot on. And what he said was, we should first tap into the low-hanging fruit. That would be our power plant, our Shoal Canyon. And then work on all of those projects and, and programs that were mentioned in his report. He did mention, Ted Flanagan did mention, that he thought if we got, if we did, you know, most of the programs that were in his report, which by the way, come to about $500 million, just as an aside, the programs that he recommended, he said he would take, it was a leap for him, a leap for him to say that if we did all of those, we'd, we'd be able to meet our peak load, what we need. Leap of faith. Is that, is that what we want to do? Take that leap of faith? We have a DER company that, that can't guarantee that they can achieve what, the goal that we've set for them. So far, they're supposed to be guaranteeing us 50 megawatts, the DER goal. We so far have three. We so far have three. It's hardly a success. But we will not give up. We're not going to give up. One of the most important statements in this report from staff was this. The city's clean power goals must be balanced against the city's obligation to ensure that a reliable source of power is always available to meet the city's needs. That's my job. That's our responsibility. That's staff's responsibility, to make sure that you have available power to meet our needs every day, no matter what the weather is, whether the sun shines, the winds blow, whatever. We have to be able to provide you the power. So the need for the capacity energy are expected to increase over time. We've heard that ad nauseam due to the electric load. So my decision on this is based on balance. And I think by repowering Grayson, we'll have the ability to reach that peak demand and by continuing our development to procure more solar capacity, we can provide that clean, green energy. I want to thank Kate Unger for bringing us, for bringing me the, the numbers on the peak loads, because that actually helped make my decision, make me even more sure of my decision. So we have to try to reach that balance. So moving forward, we need to have Grayson, we need to have as much solar power as we can get in this, in this city and go for, towards all the programs that were in the EcoMotion. So we have to engage, I think, first in this low-line fruit to keep the lights on. So I will approve, I'm willing to approve three Wartzilla engines. I think that we can, by the time we get the engines up and running, technology will have moved fast enough and far enough that we will be able to fill that gap that we may be missing with the five, with the five Wartzillas. So that's, that's my decision. And, but I understand that we have to continue vigorously to employ recommendations from ecosystem, EcoMotion report to find every avenue to reach 100% renewables by 2035, no doubt about it. And I think this whole council feels the same way. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Asatria.
I'm going to try to keep, actually keep my comments short. So I think what we're prioritizing here is different than the decisions that we make on a, on a weekly basis here when it comes to sustainability and moving our city forward in the right direction. Ideally, I would have loved to seen a, even if it was a marathon session, where our utility issues were combined into one meeting, where Grayson, Shoal, all the clean energy options were part of one, and we had the ability to make policy decisions, looking at the big picture right in front of us, instead, instead of it being piecemealed together. I, I have concerns about how the reports were prepared for this. And I say this because I, you know, when you are not including the information from our solar initiatives, when, when I don't see the items that we as a body had moved forward, that you're supposed to be making a priority in this report, it only tells me that while you find it important for us, it's not a priority and you're not putting this in that same big bucket. I, you know, between the five versus the three, you know, I was quite taken aback by my colleagues during the last time this item came up, because for me, it's either you are moving in one direction or another. You know, if staff is recommending five and you're looking at those numbers and saying, okay, this is the direction we're going to go with, then, you know, just coming up with numbers of your own makes no, makes no sense to me. So again, for me, it's about how you're prioritizing. And ideally, I would have loved for us to see how we're putting our money towards the items that EcoMotion brought forth. The previous city council had actually delayed this project in order for that to come forward, and yet we had it last week. And, you know, it's not part of the assessment that's here today. I think it's fiscally irresponsible for us to invest this when we're talking about, we have to get off by 2035. And in the spirit of keeping it short, I'll just say that I will not be supporting, whether it's five or three. I believe our residents deserve better, and I think we can make a better commitment to our environment and what we build and what we put our money towards. Thank you.
All right. So I, I do agree with you that I, our residents deserve better, and I think that we need to do better. And we are doing the best we are able to, given the circumstances. A number of initiatives have been put forth by this council. Some of them have worked to get us to where we are, where we have, for instance, 3.5% coal versus the 47% coal that Pasadena has. And then some have not, such as, you know, the Sunrun deal that was not able to come to fruition, which perhaps could have prevented us from making some decisions that will not be the most desirable and will call, cause some consternation among members of, of our public. But including the outlay of funds to do this, I personally believe battery storage will be something that will help save cities, along with hydrogen in the future, but we're not there. We have to also, in addition to that, address our behavior patterns and the usage of electricity. Simply producing more electricity for it to be consumed at the pace faster than we're able to produce it is not going to be sustainable. I also agree that Sierra Club made some recommendations that said we need to incentivize, I think it was on this document here, that we can incentivize better behavior, whether it's charging your electric vehicles at times when it's not at its peak in terms of demand, and you are being more efficient with when you're charging these electric vehicles, which will come online because of the state's mandates. Whether it's increasing the benefits for the demand response and getting more people to participate by giving them something substantive enough that would encourage them to participate, and as well as being able to bring back incentives for rooftop solar, these are all things we have to do. But it doesn't have to be an either or. We have to do all these and also look at ensuring the reliable production of electricity for our city for those times when it is needed. It's unfortunate that it has been delayed this long, so we are forced to make these terrible decisions. But I'll tell you, it's something that I am not relishing, but I feel that needs to be done. And I wish that, you know, if half the efforts were put into reforming the energy portfolios of our neighboring cities, if we're looking at this globally in terms of carbon footprint, carbon emissions, if half the efforts were put into reforming the portfolios of our neighboring cities, as have been put into lambasting the city of Glendale and making some of us feel like Neanderthals for not necessarily agreeing with everything that's been said here at the podium, then perhaps our children would inherit a better earth. 47% coal in Pasadena, Glen Arm Power Plant in Pasadena. But if I were to do a Google search on any environmental activist group's name and Glen Arm Power Plant, I would not have even a quarter of the hits on the internet to come back for action alerts and letters as come back when I do a search on Grayson and any of the names of the organizations that have spoken here. Kudos to everyone who's an activist. But let's be a little bit, you know, we talk about diversity, equity, let's be a little bit equitable in our criticism. And remember that when we're pointing the finger at certain individuals, we have three fingers pointing back at us. So as painful and as seemingly nonsensical as tonight's actions may seem to those who are, again, acting in the best interests of the environment, which we hope we all are, we do need to come up with something that'll bridge us to the future, to get us to the points where we need to. I wish the Sunrun program had come on board, but in the absence of that, I don't know if I can support five engines. And in terms of what the difference is between five engines and three engines, it's the difference of amount of energy that's produced and the impact that it'll have by having that energy produced. I would support the minimal possible engine usage that we can have without having lights turned off, without having water pumps shut down, causing folks to boil water, as was recently done in Houston. And I can't, in good conscience, take an action that would put me somewhere down the line in such a negligent position where, you know, this council, like the council in Flint, Michigan, was held criminally liable for not supporting policies that could have saved their residents much pain and suffering. I'm open to any motions.
Can I make one other comment? Because I, I see that we have three people, well, you, you didn't clearly say where you're landing.
I won't support five.
Okay.
But I won't support zero either.
Okay. So I think there's probably a majority for three. But I would like to say a few things to my neighbor here, Councilmember Najarian, because I would, I would hope to convince him that three is workable for us. So a few things I was thinking about as you were talking. One of them is, when you look at what CEC talks about, what they're forecasting for load growth, you don't see this kind of load growth that we're talking about here. So what, what's being presented to us is really inconsistent with what the CEC is talking about statewide for the impact of vehicle and building electrification. And remember, I mean, our issue is the peak and, and vehicle electrification, that impact on the peak can be very much managed. And that's what everybody is counting on doing. Building electrification is really, and remember, we had the consultant here and he said, you know, really that's an issue of wintertime, because wintertime is when you're, you know, running your heat on electricity rather than gas. And so the impact is more of a winter than a summertime issue. And we know building electrification will be gradual, because it's going to be as new buildings get built. It's not going to be, you know, we're not going to see this kind of growth by 2027 in, in five years that, that we're being presented, presented with. And I'm, I'm not just making that up. That's based on, you know, a lot of conversations, a lot of, of my own analysis, not really my own analysis, but talking to other experts in, in the state. And I did double-check this today with the chief of staff of one of the vice chairs of the, of the CEC, who, who is really the one pushing DERs and who has said to us, they're very excited about working with us on DERs. They said, there is a substantial amount of money and they, and, and they think we're a great place to do some innovative things. And, and our mayor was, was with me on a call, what, a week or two ago, with the vice chair. So there's a lot of opportunity. The last thing I want to say is, if we do three engines and we find loads are growing faster than, than we thought, GWP was right, we can add batteries. faster than we thought, GWP was right, we can add batteries. And as you saw, Mr. Webb's analysis there, which I think is very solid, he's always been right on the money, you know, another 35 megawatts of batteries takes us comfortably to this peak, this peak that GWP is presenting. So if we find things are moving faster, we can add batteries. We could add them distributed around the city or in some other way. And there are a lot of new technologies. I mean, we just saw that the Sacramento Municipal Utility District is investing a lot in these iron flow batteries. These are these new 10-hour batteries. These are becoming commercially viable. And I think in just a few years, that might be something we want to experiment with. So I think we're on safe ground if we go with three, and we keep a watchful eye, we work very hard on the DERs, and, you know, we'll move forward on that basis. So I'm hoping we can get you on board. I would say for Councilmember Osotryan, really, I don't think no engines. It's just the numbers just don't work. And, I mean, I've been at this for a long time, so I know that, you know, it's hard coming into this at this stage, but...
I would really ask for my colleagues to stop referring to it as that. Every meeting I come here, and there's somebody off this dais that notes that, I know you haven't been here long enough, and I need that conversation to end respectfully.
Okay. All right.
Well, I think that everyone has said their piece unless someone would like to add to their comments, and absent of that, we can entertain a motion and see where it lands.
Well, I'll make the motion that we proceed with the three Borzila engine configuration. I know there are a few other, that's the second resolution. If you could kind of guide us on how we go about that, because I know there's also something about, a few other bits and pieces there.
Councilmember Brotman, there's one other item, the item 8C3, which is the motion to authorize the collectible work authorization with Southern California Gas. So if you're going to go with the three-engine option, that would be 8C2, excuse me? And then, so I would recommend the council make that motion separately and then take up 8C3.
Okay. Well, I will move that we adopt Resolution 8C2.
Second.
Hold on, let me just, that's correct, right?
No, I think...
Yes.
It's the three.
It's the three.
8C2 is three, correct.
Okay.
Second.
Motion was made for 8C2, and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Osotryan?
No.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Hmm, okay.
Okay, is it yes?
Yes, okay, all right.
Eric Asakian?
I'll vote yes.
And then I'll move 8C3.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Osotryan?
No.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Eric Asakian?
Yes. All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Item nine, community development regarding revisions to Chapter 30.26, Advertising Signage Overlay Zone, ASOZ relating to expanding and further defining the number and types of signs permitted in the ASOZ and other miscellaneous text amendments. Introduction of an ordinance approving a first amendment to the 2020 statutory development agreement with the Americana at Brand LLC in accordance with Glendale Municipal Code Chapter 30.26.100 for ASOZ non-accessory signs and sign structures and animated signs and sign structures at the Americana at Brand, continued from 12/06/22 council meeting. One, introduction of ordinance amending Title 30. And two, introduction of ordinance adopting a first amendment to the 2020 development agreement with the Americana at Brand LLC.
All right. Let's open this hearing at 10:35 PM and get started.
Mayor Asakian, my city council, I'm just going to turn it over to Roger Kiesel, our senior planner, present this item for your consideration.
I see you have 19 slides. If you can get through this...
I will skip some. How about that?
Yeah, in eight, you'll be one of my favorite people this evening. All right, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Americana at Brand LLC is proposing text amendments to Chapters 30.26, the Advertising Signage Overlay Zone. These text amendments include allowing freestanding signs to be ASOZ non-accessory signs, allowing freestanding signs and marquee signs to be animated signs, and then finally, as a result of these requested changes, an amendment to their development agreement. As a result of the requested changes, additional changes are also proposed. That includes a sort of initiation of a freestanding sign definition, as well as standards for freestanding signs, amendments to the animated sign standards, amendments to marquee sign standards, alteration to the description and purpose section, and then finally, elimination of the applications section of this chapter. Couple slides on the background that unless you all have questions, I'm going to skip.
I have a question on...
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt. On the proposed sign changes, and there's a picture of the theater, is that going to be digitalized as well? Is that why these pictures?
It is, yeah.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. So in the 2004 Town Center Specific Plan, that plan enabled 24 freestanding signs within the Americana. Freestanding signs were not defined. Given the request today, we thought we'd define them. That definition's on the slide and will be part of the ASOZ chapter. Basically, that definition reflects what the freestanding signs look like now, which is this. If you look on the right-hand side, that's a freestanding sign that's out at the Americana Unless anyone has questions about accessory versus non-accessory signs, I'll skip this As noted, the Americana would like to expand non-accessory signs to not only their ASOZ wall signs, but also to freestanding and marquee signs. That's sort of one of the bigger nuts of the request. Animated signs, the definition is the first bullet point, I don't need to read that. Animated signs are fairly strictly, or very strictly restricted in the city. One of the places they are allowed are in the ASOZ overlay, and they are allowed as ASOZ wall signs. They are restricted, however, to image changes that don't change more than eight seconds. So you've got an eight-second image and then a one-second transition. The other sort of big ask for the Americana was to expand animated signs to both marquee signs and freestanding signs, so they have the ability to animate. And they also want to allow movement. So instead of the static transition, static, you can allow movement. Someone can run in the advertisement and see movement. Staff supports the text amendments. Number of reasons bullet pointed, as well as the staff report. Sign standards, there are locational brightness standards, there are other aesthetic standards for the two new signs that are going to be included in the animation and the non-accessory, basically to make sure that they are, you know, consistent with the standards within the Americana and don't present a whole bunch of sort of not-so-good things. In addition to those standards or those amendments, we are looking at just a slight amendment to the description and purposes section. That section references ASOZ wall signs. Since freestanding signs are not wall signs, verbiage is changed or proposed to be changed to sort of acknowledge that. And then elimination of the application section. As you all may know, the Community Development Department recently went sort of all online in terms of application submittal, and so we no longer need, for instance, 20 zone change applications. We need one that's submitted online. So that whole application section is proposed to be removed, not really related to this request. As a result of this request, the Americana will be changing the freestanding sign to what you see on the left-hand side, very similar to what's out there now. The advertising portion of the structure is slightly smaller, and then the marquee of the theater. As part of the requested text amendments, they will need to amend their development agreement. Just in summary, that amendment is a 20-year term. The public benefit part is the new signs, 12% of the gross incremental revenue will be received by the city during the amortization period. After the amortization period, it bumps up to 15%. And then the amortization period for static wall signs is five years. For anything animated, it's 10. The Planning Commission reviewed this a couple weeks ago. On November 16th, they recommended adoption of the proposed amendments, and they recommended that the council find that the DA is consistent with the general plan, Town Center Specific Plan, and downtown specific plan. So as a recommendation to city council, we recommend, staff recommends that you consider the addendum to the March 2010 final mitigated negative declaration and the 2013 addendum. We also recommend review and approval of the proposed text amendments, as well as review and approval of the amended DA. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions on this? Go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I have, so, two questions. One of them has to do with the revenue sharing at 12% to 15%. What's our opportunity to revisit that and, you know, do a little bit better for our residents than 12% to 15% after this is amortized? Or it's 12% during the amortization?
It's 12% during the amortization, 15 after the signs have been amortized.
Well, first of all, what's, do we have a forecast for the revenue that that would bring into us?
Um...
Yes, please. Stop the comments here.
The city does not, but members of the Americana brand are here, they may have some...
Please approach the podium.
I'd be interested.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name's Chris Robertson. I'm vice president of planning, government, and community relations for Caruso. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight on what's been a very packed agenda. Hopefully, this will be very straightforward, because we see it as a win-win for everyone. I'd like to start by thanking staff, particularly Mr. Kiesel, for a very thorough staff report and presentation. To answer your question directly, Councilmember Brotman, we don't know exactly what the revenue's going to look like. It'll depend on how many kiosks we end up converting, what the demand is, but a very, very conservative estimate would show the city receiving at least quarter of a million dollars. And again, it could very easily be higher than that.
Over a year?
Yes.
Quarter of a million a year?
Yes.
Just from that 12% above the base? So what's the baseline?
The baseline is 385,000.
So you're expecting that to go up so much that, so 385,000 now per year is what you bring in from those signs?
Correct, on average, yeah.
And you're expecting that to go up to what?
Well, that would be over $2 million.
Whatever would equate to 12% coming out to 280...
That just seems astonishing.
It's a great way for the city to increase revenue and fund any number of the items that were discussed here tonight, so it's also very timely. That's why it really is a win-win all around. We have an opportunity to modernize Americana, elevate the guest experience, make sure that the Americana continues to be a vibrant and active town center, and the city has the opportunity to increase revenue.
So that would be like, I'm trying to calculate it in my head, what that would be. 385, wait, you said 385 now? And it would go to what?
Well, again, a conservative estimate would be over, a little over $2 million.
Just by going to animation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
They also get freedom to advertise more types of things.
Right, I understand it's...
Non-accessory.
I understand that, yeah, it's both. It's both the non-accessory.
Well, I have a question. So who makes the advertising content decisions? Will that be your...
That'll be us in partnership with the sign broker.
And you're going to maintain a certain tasteful, I know we can't dictate First Amendment, right, there's this whole First Amendment stuff, but you're going to maintain your previous level of sensitivity to controversial issues, nudity, bad behavior?
Absolutely.
Violence?
That's an unequivocal yes.
All that other stuff that we don't want to see, but we can't dictate to you not to have it.
Yes. We are a very family-friendly establishment, and by all means, we would maintain that level of integrity.
Ms. Robertson, I would like to ask, thank you for, you know, staying through the evening, and thank you for the information that you've provided us. My interest is, and I generally support animated signs, because I think they've come a long way. They're not as bright as they were at one point. In fact, nowadays, with modern technology and being able to control luminosity, you can sometimes hardly tell when a billboard is digital versus when it's not. And I'm looking forward to when staff brings back an overall citywide reformation of our digital sign policies. But in regards to the signs on your premises, one of the things that would interest me is making sure that the city has the ability to push out information in emergencies using these signs. That's one of the assets I see of digital signs throughout the city, that whether it's during the time of a pandemic, whether it's during an earthquake, or when we've had a number of the hillside fires, and we've had to push out information for what number of people can contact for emergency information, or where to go in an emergency, this would be a tremendous asset. Is that something that you would be in agreement to doing upon approval of this?
We would be happy to work with the city to figure out a way to integrate those emergency situations. I will say that it's not an immediate update like you would get with a text kind of technology. There is a slight delay because we're working with JPEG images, but we would be happy to work with the city on that.
Okay. Well, if we could come up with a way where we could put out basic information, it would just be text, whatever it would be, that would be great. But in addition to that, if it is something that has a delay, to at least come up to an agreement with the city to be able to push out certain public service announcements, you know, it could be announcing when election day is for our community in different languages, and doing that digitally is a lot easier than having it done the old-fashioned analog way. Would that be something that you would be willing to do?
Yeah, for emergency situations, absolutely. I mean, we'd have to discuss the amount of time we're publicizing an election, for example, is eating into, is ultimately eating into the revenue. But yes, if the city could sort of pre-populate... But yes, if the city could sort of pre-populate these images in the event of an earthquake, you know, want to go here or fire, whatever it is, that way we have the image and copy on standby and then we can send it over more expeditiously and get it up all the more quickly.
All right. Thank you.
I'd be happy to introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Satrian, you went with the mic. Okay, so Councilmember Devine has introduced the ordinance.
9A1.
We're closing the hearing at 10:50. I'm sorry? There's two ordinances?
Yes, 1A1 and 2.
9A1 and 2.
Mayor Kasakian?
You can do them separately.
We do?
Yes, separately.
Okay, we do have one, well, the speaker just spoke. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, it has been closed. Items have been introduced and they'll come back for a vote. Thank you very much. All right, what is next?
Next, our oral communications. We do not have anyone.
Any, okay, no cards, no one left. All right, there is one item, actually, Councilmember Brotman, you wanted to have things added to the item that you had voted on, that we voted on in regards to Grayson.
Yes, I completely...
Anti-climactic with everyone having left, but in order for that to happen...
We have to do a reconsideration.
We have to do a reconsideration and we have to vote on that.
Okay, can I first explain why I want to do a reconsideration?
Sure, please.
Because I completely forgot to include the conditions of approval that I laid out and I was hoping my colleagues would support, which is, you know, a stacking order we talked about, so that fossil would be last, the no sales with, you know, the exceptions if we're required by law, et cetera. And then the third would be reporting, which is kind of a TBD, talking to staff about what's operationally feasible, but some regular reporting on the usage that would be publicly available. Those were three conditions I did want to add.
But isn't that a, wouldn't that be a separate issue, management and use of the power facility once it's up and running? I mean, I have no objection to that, but I'm not sure we have to tack it on now. I think we can set a policy.
So, so let's ask...
Okay, I wanted it to be a condition of...
Let's ask the city attorney or city manager whether that's something that should be, it's a preference to have it added now or if it's something that can be considered later, given that I think that you have some consensus from the council that that was something that we wish to do.
The council's preference, if you want to have us bring those things back when, at a later time, we can, or if you want to make sure that...
While we're here and since we can get this done in under five minutes, yes...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I apologize, Councilmember Najarian, I'm going to ask our general manager, Mr. Young, to respond or get clarification on this ask before you vote on it, just to make sure that we all are on the same page and that these are doable and feasible to perform.
Great, thank you, thank you. Conceptually, I agree with all of them and what I, we're not going to have these units for three years, so things might change. So, for instance, if I'm not, if GWP cannot use these units, that we could not put them in what they call the energy imbalance market in the QISO, because you need to have a balanced schedule and you put your resources in there so that they'll either turn on or off your unit to make it more efficient, to make it more environmentally friendly and better for the environment in the QISO. So we wouldn't be able to join the EIM, and that's the energy imbalance market in the day ahead. They're creating a new imbalance market in the hour ahead and subsequently wouldn't be able to be involved in that. Los Angeles and Glendale and Burbank are talking about ways to get involved in it to try to make it more efficient. Why do I want to be in that? So if I have an inefficient unit on and I had obligated that to be part of my way to meet my load and the QISO says, you don't need to turn that unit on, I have a more efficient unit over here to turn on, so therefore you can save emissions or it could be cheaper, it could be more efficient for the grid, we would then go and do what QISO tells you to do. Subsequently, if the unit is efficient and there's an inefficient unit on in Pasadena, they might tell you to not run the inefficient unit in Pasadena, I'm only using Pasadena as an example, an inefficient unit in Pasadena, and to run this unit. I don't know what the rules are with the E-DAM yet, but I just want to make sure that I am definitely on board with making our fossil fuel the last resource and all of our renewable and clean must runs, must take, so those are the, that's how we do it now. I think we have three years to make sure that we're in tune with how you want to run this unit. I'm just a little nervous that if we make a rule now, it might prevent us from being able to maximize our ability to be in the QISO's EIM market. And another one is, we don't want to be able to be forced to discharge our battery before the Wartzila engine comes on, because sometimes we would need to have that battery later on in the day. So we would start the Wartzila, save the battery, use it later on in the day. If we had such a rigid stacking order, it might be requirement to discharge your battery fully before the Wartzillas come on, and that might not be the optimal way to operate the system.
Okay, can I?
Sure, go ahead, Councilmember.
If I could get a second, that we bring this back and look at it a little more fine-grained and come up with, come up with a reasonable, workable plan, then...
You do have your second and I think that that is a good point to, this would warrant a more thorough discussion in a marathon meeting.
Second, bring back all three of those items.
Bring back, yeah, the three items. So is this in the form of an amendment to an already passed item or is this...
I think Councilman Brotman said he's okay bringing these items back later time and he's got the second.
As a separate discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's a lot in there.
Sure, and it sure seems that way. Obviously, the sentiment is there and I think that the public hopefully hears us loud and clear on our intentions. So with that, since we have no other items, the last meeting of 2022, drum roll, please. May we have a motion and a second?
Move to adjourn.
A second.
All right. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, peace to, and goodwill to everyone. Armenian Christmas and good night and good luck.
We're not here on the 10th.
Yeah, you guys are in the...
What day is the...
January 6.